Like just road, like road rage on a golf course.
Wow.
Oh my gosh.
With carts?
Oh, no, they, this guy came out, this other guy, and the whole time you can't tell who he's coming to. And then you see him and he's like, like your size.
Yeah, someone's at my house getting, you know, from their daughter.
They just finished it with, through the guy in the water.
Wow.
So Golf Digest, like it's on the website.
Like Happy Gilmore.
They don't say Red Deer County, it just says golf thing going on, right? But it's Alberta Springs.
Across the road.
Yeah, yeah.
So what, what caused it?
Twenty-three minute delays, uh, I'd say improper marshaling. Because they shouldn't have to do that themselves, right? A marshal should come along and move someone along or out of the way.
It happens all the time.
Twenty, twenty-three minutes is a little bit on the golf course.
Canyon tonight on. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to call Red Deer County Council to order. The time is nine thirty-three. Uh, the first item is our agenda. What is your wish, Councilor Moore?
Good morning, Ma Wood. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to move our county council meeting agenda for Tuesday, July the eighth, two thousand and twenty-five as presented.
I see on my, um, I see on mine, um, Ms. Rodwell that, I see that five point five says number eleven to hold. What is the?
Yes, so council today, you don't necessarily have to change the order of the agenda. You're always allowed to just move things around as you see fit. But we're going to ask that you not consider, uh, item five point five, consideration of the ISDA B by law, until after consideration of six point one, the IDP. As well, we're going to ask that you don't consider item six point four, amendment to Liberty Landing Outline Plan, until after seven point one, the public hearing related to the amendment for the land use by law related to Liberty Landing, that that Outline Plan Amendment spurs from. So again, no changes required to the agenda. We would just like you to modify the order in which you consider those items so that they're in sequential order. Thank you.
So if I said as modified, Mr. Ma, would that be okay?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Councilor Kennett?
I have a question on, maybe five point two should be ahead of five point one, because they're sort of dealing with the same thing. One's the policy and one's then a funding request.
Uh, they are put there in a strategic order, uh, for a reason. We're asking you to consider that, that one standing pending request, and then look at the, the policy in a more holistic fashion. Um, because we're asking for some fairly specific things in that request, and I'll see if Director Brent has any further comment on that, but it's very specifically in that order.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, through the CAO, Marin Council, it's, i- it's a bit debatable, um, because, because the requests, uh, from Innisville is specific to a project. It could be considered on its own merits, and you'll see when we get to the report and you'll see in your report, there is the opportunity for council to grant a variance to your current policy. Um, we're, we're just unsure, we wouldn't know as administration, what council's desire would be with the policy, so, um, so we can't necessarily make the assumption that the policy would change, uh, before entertaining the request. So, uh, it's kind of sticks one half dozen the other, but there was, that kind of was the reason for it.
So since it's a policy, it doesn't affect the one before, is what you're, is what I'm hearing, is that correct?
It, it can, but you can always set aside a policy. It's not like a bylaw where it's more difficult or not typically done to set aside a bylaw, but you can always set aside a policy.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the agenda? All those in favor? Opposed? Councilor Masters opposed, um, motion for the, is, is approved? Okay, we'll continue on to item number three point one, the council minutes from June sixteenth. Councilor Kennett?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I would just, uh, highlight one change that I pointed out to, uh, Ms. Rodwell earlier, on the, uh, minutes stating when, uh, the city was holding their meeting. It was, I believe, July seventh, not June seventh. And otherwise I'd move it as amended.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Carried unanimously, continuing on to item three point two, June seventeenth, council meeting minutes. Councilor Ramsey?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wood. I would move our minutes from June seventeenth as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Okay, continuing on to reports, item number five point one, Innisville Aquatic Facility Funding Request. Mr. Brown, good morning.
Good morning, once we get this loaded up. Good to go? Okay, excellent. So the purpose of this report is to consider a request from the town of Innisville for funding towards their aquatic facility. And we just want to note that recreation service provider funding is identified in council's strategic priorities. So a little bit of background on the aquatic facility itself, which was presented to you, uh, by the town of Innisville to GPC. It was constructed in nineteen eighty-nine, uh, does require significant enhancements to comply with current codes, uh, to provide functionality and operational efficiency, to improve accessibility. So we talk about barrier-free access, which is for, for people who have mobility issues, and to extend the lifespan of the facility. And the details were captured in the attachment, which you had seen previously presented by, uh, town of Innisville staff to council, or to GPC, sorry. And, um, and you have them in your report. The project's estimated cost is just shy of fifteen million dollars, and this includes owner anticipated risk and shared anticipated risk under an integrated project delivery model. So those, those are kind of what we would typically, under normal tendering, we'd call contingency. Uh, but in this case, because there's a bit of a shared risk piece there. So some of those risks are, are things like price escalations due to tariffs or material costs. Obviously, they, they had an estimate at a point, and then if they went to actually go buy the steel, for example, uh, and the cost of steel went up, then, then some of that is included in those, those risks. So the base project scope is twelve point two million dollars, and you can see about two point six million dollars, two point seven million dollars worth of, uh, contingency or owner and shared anticipated risk in there. So those are, those are costs that may not be spent, um, if, if they don't need to be spent. That's how that works. So when it comes to financial implications for, for this request for the county, uh, funding to grant any funding to the town is not included in our current operating budget. Uh, while this is a capital project, it's in another municipality, so we have to treat it as operating funds. Uh, the county's current cash flow position is such that a lump sum amount of nine hundred thousand dollars, uh, couldn't be accommodated this year without negatively impacting the operating funds available for capital. So as you know, we have that finance explains, we have operating funds available to fund our capital projects. Uh, and however, with, uh, some scenarios, and we'll get into them in more detail, and they're, they're in detail in your report, uh, deferred contribution of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in next budget year, and then one hundred and eighty thousand per year thereafter could be accommodated, uh, within future community services operating budgets, and the current cash flow position, uh, and that's been cleared with, with corporate services. So the reason why, when we talk about this, this lump sum payment versus a deferred payment is the current policy that's in place, and, and as was brought up about, as we consider an amendment to that policy potentially in the future. Uh, current policy five point zero zero four stipulates that funding, grant funding for capital projects would be paid fifty percent upfront and fifty percent upon completion. So that nine hundred thousand dollars number is based on a one point eight million dollar contribution to the town of Innisville for their project. And so it would have to be nine hundred thousand dollars now, nine hundred thousand dollars upon completion, which presumably will be in two thousand and twenty-six. So you could see nine hundred thousand dollars now that's not budgeted for, nine hundred thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-six not budgeted for. Uh, so you'll see the recommendation come through that an alternative payment schedule, and that requires council to vary their own policy. So, in terms of public implications, uh, this is an upgrade to the facility to maintain, uh, operational efficiency, functionality, energy efficiency, and as I mentioned, uh, coming into compliance with current codes with respect to, uh, accessibility of the facility. So Red Deer County residents were a major user group, uh, thirty point eight percent of less than attendees came from the county, uh, sixteen percent of the annual memberships, uh, came from the county, and twenty-three percent of private rentals. And those are the areas that they're able to track. They don't necessarily track drop-in swims, uh, because people just come and drop in and pay, and, and they're not as, uh, not as granular, if you will, on those, but these are the areas where they do get people's addresses, and so they know that with, with a good level of certainty. They have grant funding applications in totaling a little over nine million dollars. So if they received all of that grant funding, it reduces the net project cost to five point eight million dollars. The town is proceeding, and will finance the full amount of the project using short-term borrowing. And once they find out how much grant funding they're going to receive, then they'll figure out what their long-term financing option is. So they do plan, and they do have the capacity to finance this project with long-term financing. They're just kind of using bridge financing in the middle to, uh, until they figure out the cost of all those grants and what's coming forward. So as council's aware, the town and county have discussed this co- topic at several committee meetings, so the ICF committees discussed it, as I mentioned, they presented to the Governance and Priorities Committee here. Uh, standard way of sharing things, uh, the big thing is we will notify the town what council's decision is, and, and I'll do that, do that today, uh, after council makes a decision on this, uh, so that, that they know. As you're all well aware, they're going, they're proceeding with the project. It's, it's actively proceeding. So with respect to alternatives that we came up, there's, there's a few. So following policy, alternative A would be to grant a funding contribution in the amount of nine hundred thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-five, which is before the project and nine hundred thousand upon completion, with funding drawn from general reserves and, and amending the budget accordingly. The second option, alternative B, is to grant a funding contribution towards the aquatic facility with a payment schedule that's varied, and put those future year contributions in the community services operating budget as contribution. Option C is to grant a funding contribution with a different amount. Uh, and I guess you could combine that with B, it could be a different amount and different payment schedule. Uh, and then alternative D would be to deny the town's requests and provide no funding contribution at all, so essentially a zero amount. So the recommendation from administration is alternative B, uh, requires a policy variance from policy five point zero zero four. Uh, and we, we're recommending a ten-year funding strategy, which is twenty percent of the first of the project amount in two thousand and twenty-six, which is our next budget year, so that makes sense that we can work it into our budget year without impacting the current position in this budget year. And then ten percent of the project for the following nine years. Now you'll notice that that says total payment of one point nine eight million instead of one point eight million, which was the number talked about. And the administrative position on it is, is that's just a reflection of the fact that we're deferring those payments. And so spring them out over time, it's one point eight million, one point eight million dollars in today's dollars. Uh, but spread out over time, we feel that that would be a fair, uh, accounting for the fact that, that we're asking to spread this out and defer it. It does reflect our current cash flow position. That's not necessarily, um, our financial position, and certainly Director Dietrich could fill in more if you had details about cash flow versus financial position. It's just in terms of what the actual day-to-day cash flow is and where we're at, what we have budgeted for in two thousand and twenty-five. The rationale for one point eight million, uh, as a number, is that's roughly thirty percent of that five point, five point eight million that you saw. So if they realized all their grants, so that would align with thirty percent usership. On the flip side, if they didn't get all their grants, it kind of aligns with sixteen to eighteen percent usership, uh, as well. So it's a, it's justified that it ties to the amount of county users that use the facility. Uh, but as the town of Innisville is not yet sure of how much grant funding they're getting from other organizations, we, we feel that's a good kind of median number that puts it there. It, it is around what the minimum is that the town was asking for. So they were generally asking in that, that, uh, one point five to two million dollar range was the low end of their ask. And then, as, as council may remember, the high end of their ask was, was closer to the three point five to four million range. So we feel this is a, a very, a very fair compromise, but council has all of the ability to vary this however you would like. And so just the next slide is the actual recommendation, uh, with the, with the recommended motion. And that is that council approve a funding contribution towards the town of Innisville's aquatic facility. The funding provided varies the model defined in policy number five point zero zero four, Support to Urban Municipalities. Council approves a ten-year funding strategy, twenty percent or three hundred and sixty thousand dollars of the funding amount in two thousand and twenty-six, and ten percent, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars of the funding amount for each of the nine budget years following, for a total payment of one point nine eight million dollars over the funding period. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions? Councilor DePomm?
Thanks for the report. So I do have a couple of questions. Um, my first question being, um, if they don't get all the grants and we give them, um, this amount of money, are and I realize what you said, that it would be a certain percentage of going for it, but would they come back to us to ask for more than what we've already? Like, would they want more than that?
Yeah, through the CAO, Marin Council, uh, as you know, with capital asks from other agencies, they've, there's always the opportunity for them to come back and ask for more, and there's the opportunity for council to say yes or say no. So I, I think it would be realistic to expect that if they did not recognize all of their grant funding, they would then have a financial position to look at, and that may involve a council conversation in the future, uh, but, but we don't know that for sure. So, uh, this amount doesn't stop a future council from approving more, but it also is an amount that, from an administrative perspective, we feel, you know, is justified based on the numbers of, of users at the facility.
Kind of either way.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I do have, um, another question. So when the planning and stuff was going into this, did Red Deer County have any input into any of the, um, I guess, what they were going to do, how they were going to do it, or was, uh, just come to after this is what we're doing, and this is Red Deer County's portion?
Yeah, through the CAO, Marin Council, it, it was certainly not something that we were involved in the detailed design of. My understanding, speaking with their administration, is there's, there's not a lot of choice. The, the initial thought was to build a new facility, and, and their numbers were significant on that. We expect if they had gone ahead and building, building a new facility, they would have incorporated us into that process. Uh, when you're stuck with the building envelope, if you will, the size it is, there's only so many things you can fit in there. Um, so really, the understanding we have is, well, it's, it's an improvement to the building, it's maintaining the existing service level. They're not putting in new features, um, you know, there's not new amenities in there, it's replacing a hot tub with another hot tub, replacing a, a steam room with another steam room, replacing change rooms with other change rooms. So, uh, it would be different, I think, if they came back and, and were adding something. Um, so that's, the, the short answer is no. They didn't ask us upfront. The longer answer is, we're not necessarily sure that we, we would have had a lot of contribution from an administrative technical perspective, based on the, the limitations of the project, anyway.
Okay, and then I have one more.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, um, the other question I have, uh, is my understanding is there was some kind of survey or, um, input put out to Innisville town residents? Was that passed on to any of our county residents to have their say on, you know, how they felt the building should be done?
Yeah, through the CAO, Marin Council, that's a really good question, and I'm not aware of the answer.
Okay.
Um, I'm not sure if it was just out to residents, if it was available publicly and anybody could respond as a user, or if it was sent to registered users. I'm not, not aware of that, but, um, so, sorry, I can't answer that one specifically at this time.
No, thank you. Um, I've just been asked a lot about it, so, okay, those are my questions for right now.
Councilor Kennett?
Thank you. You talked about safety codes, uh, updating a lot of things in the building and whatnot. Um, do safety codes include universal change rooms?
Through the CAO, Marin Council, so our administrative understanding of the, the universal change room situation is that there was not enough physical room in the facility to have barrier-free separate change rooms. So if the width of the doors and the width of the corridors are, are wider to allow for barrier-free access, so barrier-free being mobility, uh, mobility restricted access, typically we'd refer to, although it's not, certainly not limited to, uh, but like wheelchair access would be a typical thing that we would think of. So our understanding was that in order for them to create that access in the facility, which it currently doesn't have now, uh, up to code, they, uh, they didn't have the room to do two separate change rooms without making the building bigger. And so that's that building envelope piece. So they went to one universal change room, um, with respect to, and that's, that's the explanation that's been given to us by, by their administration, and that's our administrative understanding. And so we would, we would follow in line with that and believe, and believe that, that's what they're telling us.
So what you're saying is they didn't want to move their staff lounge or their staff office to accommodate their barrier-free? Is that what they're claiming?
Through the CAO, Marin Council, I, I couldn't, I couldn't articulate what they did or didn't want to do. Uh, the explanation that they've given to us is that they did not have room to create two separate change rooms that would comply with the current codes with respect to barrier-free access.
Thank you. Councilor Ramsey?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. I guess, uh, you know, looking at the, the recommendation for the, the payment plan, um, is, is there, would we be taking on any significant risk? I'm, I'm just curious, you know, if, if the, the policy gets updated, and this is kind of the way we go, I guess, you know, and you get a bunch of these payments over time, I guess, is just where I'm curious about the risk factor with the payments over that long a period.
Mr. Brown?
Yep, through the CAO, Marin Council, uh, it's, that's a great consideration, and when we, we start to consider what could potentially be out there in terms of regional asks for other facilities, uh, when we, we look at it at the long term and, and look at what the ICFs are, we do believe there'd be capacity. Um, the big, the big distinguishment, if you will, on this one is this is an existing facility and, and replacement of an existing facility versus construction of a new facility. And we think both administratively and, and potentially a council would have the opportunity to set parameters around how you handle new facilities. So something that's a new service level that wasn't previously offered. Um, the, the, the idea of kind of deferring these payments over a period of time certainly does put some things into the future, but it also reflects current cash flow positions, and, and as, as we know, the, the cash flow position of, of large lump sum payments now, or even two or three years from now, uh, we do feel that the payments over time are, are better suited than large, large contributions every three years or something like that, which, which we would still expect to come in when somebody needs a new, I shouldn't say new, when they need to replace or upgrade their arena, or replace or upgrade their indoor fieldhouse facility, or anything like that that currently exists, the, those asks could come forward in the future, and this is an opportunity to, to look at how to handle those in, in, um, the current financial situations that we have.
Okay. And, and I assume we would have the flexibility to, to just pay it out, too, if, you know, if things changed, or if, if we had a bunch, you know, if that budget got a little bit more restricted and we had the, the funds to just pay it out. Do, do we have that flexibility in this, or are we set to this payment schedule?
Through the CAO, Marin Council, uh, again, a really great question, and, and it's, it's really in how this council decides that they, they want us to go ahead, because it's, it's us granting them money. Uh, so really, what we can do is we can put together a bit of a grant agreement and say, this is what we're going to do. If you'd like the flexibility to pay it out sooner, I can't see that the town of Innisville would object to that. Uh, because then they can take that money and put it into some sort of account and, and use it. Uh, with the deferred payment, it, it helps fund their debt servicing, so they were, they were open to that when we spoke with their administration. Um, they were okay with that idea. So we think this is kind of the, the way of drawing it out, and you'd always have the chance to kind of, I guess it's like an open mortgage or whatever, where you can just pay it down sooner without penalty sort of thing. Um, that would, that would be something that we could certainly write in if, if council wished to have that flexibility.
Councilor Moore?
Thank you, Ma Wood. Thank you, Director Brand for a great report. Um, if, if the anticipated risk, uh, could you explain that a little bit? I, I'm not quite clear on that. Please, thank you.
Yes, I certainly can. Sorry, I'm just, I'm scrolling to the, there we go, to the, um, the, the presentation slide that has those on there. So, under the Integrated Project Delivery Model, it's, it's a model where the contractor and the owner share some of the risks. So there's, it's, it's kind of like a, a bonus opportunity. So if they don't spend it, the contractor gets a bit of a bonus out of it, uh, on the, on the shared anticipated risk. So they get a, they get a portion of that added to their contract. And a lot, a lot of that's tied to things like schedule, uh, so things the contractor could kind of control, but not completely control. Uh, whereas owner anticipated risk is things like, say they, they dig up the hot tub, and they find out that there's no foundation under the hot tub. So that's your, that's your typical contingency. So those, those costs, that two point seven million dollars that's sitting in there is not allocated to be spent. Uh, but it's sitting there as contingency in case things do come up. And like I said, uh, material cost escalations from the original quote, things like that, because it's, this isn't the conventional project design where you design it, then go out and tender it and have a price. They have, they've designed, tendered, got it all going, all under one lump sum, and then it takes a little while to spool up, and sometimes things can change in three or four months, uh, with respect to some of the material that you do, uh, that you acquire and things like that. So that's, that's what those two are. So not guaranteed to be spent. Uh, some of them are complete unknowns, and some of them are what we'd call known unknowns. You know there's something, but you're not quite sure how it's going to finish up.
And somewhat of an incentive to the contractor, as you mentioned. Um, thank you for that. My second question is, uh, as this project is now underway, and, um, would, would a member of council be invited to meetings to see how the project is, is coming along, you know, since we are investing? Is, would you, do you think that's? You know, since we are investing, is, would you, do you think that's a possibility?
Yeah, through the CAO, through the CAO to American Council, um, I'm not sure entirely how often your ICF committee meets. But that would be, I would suggest that probably be a great opportunity is, is the ICF committee members would, would ask and then report back to council on what the progress of that update was. And, and I think the, the meeting structures are set up such that administration attends and presents. Um, and so they'd be able to provide updates as the project went along.
Thank you, Director Brandt.
Counselor Massier?
Yeah, running out of questions, great ones I'm hearing so far, just waiting to amend the report. But I will ask a question. You justified a lot of your numbers at the end of your report, and I appreciate that. The only one is that, and the new word you used was the contingency, as we usually refer to it, but this owner anticipated risk, shared anticipated risk. When you crunched all your numbers and presented your 30%, give us that numbers you came up with and if they don't get all their grants in, it goes to that 15% somewhere in their usage. Did you ever pull your numbers pulling that contingency risk out? Or did you just leave it in the whole time because you took the grant money out? So I'm just looking for clarity on that one, and then I'm ready for the motion, Mr. Mayor, almost, I guess.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, through CAO to American Council, uh, there's, I don't know, there's a bit of black box number. Because how do you come up with a number when you don't know what the final number is? When you take out a number and then you don't take out, so the, the reason why we feel pretty comfortable with the 1.8 million number is it's, it fits in that whole sliding scale. Whether contingency is in or out, whether all the grants are in or out, uh, with the, the variance in numbers, like from 16% to 30% is a pretty broad range of user numbers as well. So it gives council the flexibility and, and the opportunity to justify. If the project cost was lower and, and you pay more, you're paying a higher percentage of the project, but you had higher, higher user percentage. If the project cost was, was higher, or they didn't get as many grants, and you could say, well, it still aligns with, with our usership, uh, below. We had administratively talked, we, we did not feel that it was fair to recommend to council to include owner anticipated risk. Uh, because that's, that's ultimately the town of Innisville's decision. And so we're comfortable that the numbers are reflective of, of that, uh, $12.2 million base number. Uh, with, with a little bit of understanding, there is some shared risk on the project for things that the owner can't control.
Thank you. Counselor Holsman?
Most of my questions have been answered. I guess the only question I would have is the numbers that they came up with, the users for their lessons and stuff, that must have included all of the local schools that also attended? Because it could be even a little bit higher if they didn't have the schools in there. That's just a question I have. Because I know that the drawing comes from Bowden and Spruceview as well.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, so, uh, through the CAO to American Council, my understanding of, of their numbers is, are these are the direct registrations they have. So then it does not include the schools. It does track with, uh, generally the percentage of students from the county that go to school in Innisville. It is relatively similar. So you, you could kind of say, when the school comes and books, they don't, they just count that as a school booking. They don't parse out town residents versus county residents. But about 30% of the school, uh, population in Innisville is from the county. So, so it, it does track that way, but this is just specifically to the numbers. They could actually say, when you sign up, what's your address? Track it to somebody in the county.
Thank you for that clarification, because basically that is the thing. There's a lot of drawing from the various schools around there that are all county residents. Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion? More questions? Okay, go ahead.
Thanks Dave for all your answers and, but I do have one more question. So, did they, has the town Innisville, um, only requested funding from Red Deer County? Or have they, um, also talked to other municipalities that use that swimming pool for, uh, funding as well?
Yeah, through this, through the CAO to American Council, so the, the discussion is because there's ICF committees and there's mandated inter collaborative agreements between the county and the town, they've approached us first. Uh, as, as was asked, uh, when GPC asked them that question, I believe CAO Becker said that that's something they could, could or would look at. I don't believe they have at this time. The, the key thing that we made sure we were very clear with them on is they are not asking the county to fund anybody else's share. So we are not funding a share for Bowden or for Penhold, uh, or for Olds. They are only asking for the portion that would be tied to our share. And then they still have the opportunity to go ask those other municipalities to contribute, uh, potential share towards it. They have, but my understanding is they have not yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm looking for a motion. Counselor Massier?
Yeah, I really liked your report, um, Mr. Brandt. And I really liked the way you broke it down over the 20% down and 10% a year for the next nine years and give them a little bit of interest that we're saving and your cash flow. The only thing I don't like is your number of 1.8. So my motion's gonna be your recommendation, but with a number of 1.5 million. And then shake the numbers out however they work out. So we'll, we'll throw that one on the floor, Mr. Mayor. The administration recommendation on payment plan, but using a 1.5 base number, not 1.8.
Thank you. We're motion on the floor. We'll go around the table. Counselor Holsman, keep the same direction where we're going.
I can't support that motion. I am going to support the recommendation because I, like, that was my question clearly about how much the county uses it. And, uh, this is just, uh, in my mind, a bare minimum to get that, that swimming pool up and running. And I mean, we want kids participating. I have grandchildren that go there. We're in the county. I think it's a, an excellent venue, and if it's not there and they, I, I think we just pay our share for now, and down the road, there could be talks with ICFs and where operating goes in capital. So I cannot support the motion at 1.5.
Thank you. Counselor DePaul?
So, um, yeah, I'm a little torn here because, uh, I've gotten quite a few phone calls about this whole, um, whole thing. And lots of it has been the fact that, um, Red Deer County had zero input on anything that went on and, you know, basically, it ca- it came down to, um, and then when they were told to phone their counselor and the response that, you know, I could only give them was while we weren't involved in that process. It was just the asking for the money part of it. So, you know, I could support Counselor Massie's motion of 1.5. I do realize we need to support them in that aspect, but also, um, you know, these are, it's county residents' taxpayer money. And it is the fact that, you know, none of us were at the table. And the surveys didn't go out to our county residents, as per my understanding. So I do have residents that are not happy with the ask and the, the whole way it come about. And some of the amenities that are, I guess, projected to come with the facility. But I do realize that they need, we need to do help, support them. So right now, I'm, I could probably support the 1.5. Yeah, I'm not sure right now.
Counselor Kenneth? Yeah, I, uh, I'm gonna move an amendment to the amended motion. Um, can we have two minutes? Okay, we can. Okay, go ahead. Yeah.
Yeah, just to clarify, your first is a main motion. It modifies the recommendation, but it is a main motion, so this is an amendment to the main.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I can accept the 1.5 million that, uh, Counselor Massie. But I think we need to, uh, put in a condition of our funding to protect our students and our residents. That they need to have a split change room. They need to get on it. They need to, if they need to move stuff that they have, I think that's a condition we need. So my amendment would be our funding conditional to them changing to separate change rooms. Uh, 30% of our users are, are county kids. They have a family change room. That doesn't do too well for school classroom when there's 30 plus kids in there. Uh, I think we need this, uh, and we need, if there, there's a problem that we didn't, we weren't brought to the table until after it was decided. I think if they want our funding, this is something that will, uh, help our residents and everyone. Um, this community change room, I think, is a bad idea. I, I think it's just asking for problems and, uh, I cannot support, uh, without a split change room. So that's my amendment to, uh, our funding is conditional to separate change room. Okay, so we have amendment on the floor, um, to, to make a condition to have separate change rooms, is what I'm hearing. Um, we will now talk only to the amendment. I'm gonna continue around the room in the same, uh, same direction we have been. Counselor Ramsey?
Yeah, um, you know, I, I, I do agree, I, when I first seen that, that was something I had questions about. I don't, I don't really like the, the way they set it up. I think, I think the trouble with the amendment, you know, this, this project's already in progress. I, you know, it, if, I think if that's how we really feel about it, just don't give them any funding. Uh, because to, to make it a condition, when they've already done the design and started the work, I think it, it, it's just gonna make the project not viable. So that, that's where I'm struggling with the amendment. I, I agree, I, I, I don't like the idea and the concept. And I, I wish we would have been brought into the table or to the table to have those conversations. But I, I struggle with the way the amendment is a condition of the funding when the project's already started.
Thank you. Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. I just have a question of Director Brandt on change rooms. These community change rooms, is this fairly typical now of, um, is this the way the trend is going?
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, through the CAO to American Council. So after the creation of this report by administration, the town of Innisville actually posted something on their Facebook page. And so I was just pulling it up here. So they posted a, an FAQ, uh, with respect to the project. And, and so I'm just gonna read directly from that.
Thank you.
Uh, if, if council's okay with that. Why can't, the question is, why can't the town include three separate change rooms? The universal change room is designed as the result of analysis by the project team, including professional architects, to make the most efficient use of the limited space within the existing building. There is not enough space to create three separate change rooms and meet requirements of the Alberta Building Code, particularly those related to barrier-free access. The current budget approved would not support an expansion of the facility. And then to the question, do these kinds of facilities exist anywhere else, which is Counselor Moore's current question? Many new public facilities are being designed with universal change rooms, so this is becoming a more common configuration in Alberta. As an example of this, the city of Edmonton utilizes only universal change rooms in their new recreation facilities. The new layout also ensures the facility will meet current building codes. So just circling back from our administrative perspective, our understanding is this is to meet the code with respect to barrier-free access and stay within the current building footprint.
Thank you, Director Brandt. And if, um, if this, uh, amendment of Counselor Kenneth's was to pass, what, what, uh, the impacts to this project? Like, how do you see them?
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, through the CAO to American Council, without the opportunity to speak directly to, to town's administration, asking that question of if we put a stipulation in that you needed to change your design in order to get funding, uh, my understand, uh, I'm making an assumption here, but the understanding based on this primer that I'm reading is they are going ahead with the project as it is. And so the, the, the comment made of the condition, I don't think that administration would come back and say that they were able to make a change without changing their budget significantly, because they would need to increase the footprint of their building. That's, that's our understanding, but I can't confirm that 100%.
Thank you, Director Brandt. Are we making comments or questions right now, Mayor Wood?
Comments are fine.
Okay.
Because there's a motion on the floor.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, um, so for those reasons, I, I cannot support Counselor Kenneth's motion. For a couple of reasons, um, this is the, the way designs are going in public buildings. From what you shared with us and from my observations on my travels to, um, and also this project is underway, and it's not, it's, it's not our project. We're a contributor. And, um, I don't think it would be appropriate and good for our relationship as we move forward to put such a stipulation on this much-needed project. And the research that you've shared today, Ms. Di- Director Brandt, on the rationale for these types of change rooms, um, give me assurance that, um, our residents will be safe. Thank you.
Counselor Massier?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, the amendment is not friendly to my main motion. And I can't support the amendment. Um, I think that's getting into the kitchen. Uh, I heard that this new building is going to be to code. Um, and I think any perceived safety issues with the public are a misconception of what they're building in Innisville. I fully stand behind, um, the professionals that build these new buildings, that safety comes first of our, of, of our residents. So certainly not a friendly amendment, and I will not support it.
Counselor Holsman?
Thank you. I cannot support the amendment either. The project is already underway. The town of Innisville closed the pool last week and has already started the project. And as we heard earlier, the project, we would have been brought into it if it was a big capital build. This is just us debating how much we want to pay for our residents and what our share should be. And I go back to the original amount that administration told us what our share is, so I cannot support the amendment.
Counselor DePaul?
So I have received phone calls about this exact issue. And, um, I did see the, the question and answer sheet that the town had put out. I guess, you know, the thing I'm struggling with is that if we would have been involved, we could have answered some of these questions for ourselves and found out some, some reasons why. I think so I, I'm not sure if I can support the motion, the amendment or not right at this point.
Okay, um, before you close, um, I'd just like to make my comments as well. Definitely, uh, hearing, hearing both sides of this. I'm, I'm understanding, I'm understanding where Counselor Canada and uh, Counselor DePaul are, and I'm also understanding that this project's already underway. I too have, I too have received calls on this and, and not just because it was a, uh, you know, a, um, a unis, you know, a universal, uh, change room. It was just was, I received the calls because maybe the, maybe there just wasn't gonna be enough change stalls that would actually handle the ability to take on some of these swim meets and stuff that come in all at the same time where everyone's changing at once. Uh, I, I do believe though that, I don't want to get you into the kitchen on this either. I, I think that we can, that we can identify, um, that should we pass this motion, that we can identify to our concerns to, um, to the, uh, Innisville, town of Innisville, that we have concerns on this matter. Um, and they may or may not be able to make any changes. I don't want to assume today that they're gonna be able to make a change. It's not possible. I, and I don't want to vote to make a change that's gonna stop this project either. And I'm caught on this. So for that reason, I can't support your motion. Counselor Kenneth? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We've already been told that Innisville's going ahead with this regardless. This is one way that we can put our county residents' concerns to them. If they choose to not do it, that's fine, but they also choose not to use county resident taxpayer money. Um, I heard that assumptions, well, assumptions aren't facts, they're guesstimates at best. I also heard Edmonton, well, that's the last municipality I wanna follow right now. Uh, I think Edmonton has some issues that, uh, are quite different.
Are quite different than in this facility. Quite frankly, I see lots of areas where they can adjust things if they want. And it's up to them. This amendment doesn't say you must change. This says if you want us to help you fund. This is something that we feel is important. I've heard it from many residents. I think other counselors and even Mr. Mayor has heard it from other residents. There's a line in the sand. And this is my line in the sand. My daughter will not go to an open change room. Under my household. I'm concerned for all the kids. It may be great. It may be wonderful, but this isn't the time or the place for it. And that's why I made this amendment. It's a very simple one. It doesn't force Innisville to do anything. It asks them to look and they're just in the very initial throes. It's very easy to do change orders at any time. It's not like the building's up, it's painted and it's just about ready to open. There's. Huge amount of work that's ahead of them. To even get to this point, so this isn't an unreasonable ask. This is a reasonable one and it's. Uh, it's reasonable for our residents too, and I think our residents would support this. Thank you very much.
I I'm a little bit confused because is it okay if I ask a question? Because I want clarification from administration. I wasn't aware this is an open change room. I thought this was a change room that had closed rooms that people changed in. I I want to be clear um, what I'm voting on on this motion. Counselor Kennett, can you help me out as well? I I just need to know what I'm voting on here.
Well, what I see in this is one family change room that's closed, one small family change room near where you exit to the pool. The rest of it is all one community change room.
Mr. Brown, can you help us out? What is actually being designed?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering, could we bring up the? Could you bring up the report again? Just because I I know the screenshot of the. The floor plan layout is in there. That one. So if you look there, uh, so the yellow areas where it says C R one, C R two, C R three, C R four. So those are locked, closed change rooms. Uh, so the the area, it's a common area, not a common changing area. Uh, with change rooms and then uh, the green area is the, is a family shower. Uh, not a family ch- uh, change room, so it's actually a shower space. And then you see the kinda. Orange-ish showing there on the map uh along the right-hand side. That say S H one through five, those are showers. So those are closed, locked off uh shower rooms. The the additional information that the town of Innisville put out in their public kinda showed a more. Uh, I'll call it orthographic view, so it showed it kinda top-down on the. So showing that they're secure walls, they're not just like cubicles. That's, that's what that is. So that's the clarification. And then uh, the blue area there that says W C. Those are, those are water closets, which are bath toilets. Uh, that's the terminology for those. So uh, so you s- so you have a a common. Uh, gathering area, I suppose you would call it, and then independent change rooms in yellow. Independent toilets in blue and independent showers in uh. Orange, uh, and then green there.
Okay, is there anything for you want to say? Are you good?
Yeah, it doesn't change anything.
Okay, we've, well, I'll call, I'll call the motion. Always in favor of uh Counselor uh Kennett's amendment. Opposed. Motion's been been lost for the amendment. We're now back to the original motion. We were around to talking about the original motion. We were, we were back to Counselor Kennett, so we'll continue around in the same order. The next to speak would have been Counselor Ramsey.
Yeah, I'm I'm more torn now. I'd, I do like the uh, the reduction to the one point five. That, that was what I kinda had in my notes. Um, and and kinda for those reasons that, you know. There's so many variables up here with grant funding. I I think if they get any grant funding, I I think that still keeps us in line with the percentages. So, so yeah, I I do prefer the the amount that Counselor Masiya moved over the recommendation.
Thank you. Counselor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. So um, I won't support the one point five. I I believe uh administration today have spelled out how they came to the magic number of one point eight. And it's based on the minimum. They were the words that were used here today. We want our youth, well, actually, we want everyone. From youths to babies to seniors to enjoy an active lifestyle. Aqua Fit um is particularly popular with older people. Um, this facility will be well-used by our county residents. And for the sake of three hundred thousand, uh, it's an investment because we benefit. Our residents will benefit from this. So um, I, based on the information that we've been given today. And the fact that that is, this is the minimum, I I yeah, I can't support one point five million. I remain with the recommendation of one point eight.
Mayor Wood, if I may, we do just require some clarification on the motion. Uh, so in the original resolution, we had a twenty percent funding in the first year. And ten percent for nine years after that for, so it was like a total of a hundred and ten percent. So we weren't paying one point eight million, we were paying one point nine eight million. Uh, so we do require clarification if Counselor Masiya wants this to be in that same format where it's actually. It would be three hundred thousand for the twenty percent and one hundred and fifty thousand for the ten percent for a total of one point six five. Or is it a total of one point five?
Go ahead, Counselor Masiya.
That's exactly how I liked it. I like the ten-year breakdown, the same percentages, so I guess it is one point five. It'll be a one point six, however you did the arithmetic, but it's starting with that base number of one point five, not one point eight. Thank you, Ms. Rodger, for the clarification. You added bang on.
Okay, so before you close, um, Counselor Master, I I do want to, I do want to give my opinion and and and. What I'm hearing, what I'm hearing from some members of council is that um. The one point five is is a good number and and they're, they're very happy with it, but I'm also hearing from members of council that. The original ask of one point eight um was actually come up with with some, with some reasoning behind it and not that the one point five doesn't. Because we did hear that within the range between one point five and two million from administration. Um, what I'm, my opinion, my opinion is this and and I've, I've always wanted to make sure that Red Deer County pays. For no one else, but we want to make sure we pay our own share. Um, I think that some great numbers have have come into, have come into this and and I'm understanding the one point eight. Plus, plus, plus the extra to cover the time payment. Um, and I think that, I think that through our, through our talks, through the I C F, you know what? We we've fully understood that, you know, this, maybe building this pool the way it's being built right now was, wasn't the first preference of neither Red Deer County nor Innisville. It, there was a reality. The reality came from. The fact is, is that they couldn't afford to build the big pool that that they needed and they've come up to second choice. Um, and you know, from this, then time goes by and Innisville finally has to make a choice. Are we gonna have a swimming pool for residents or not? Um, and basically, you know, they decided that a pool's important. And we have partners and we can choose to partner with them or not. And that was our choice today. But I think that what we're talking about is choosing to part with, partner with them for the appropriate amount. I'm not ever been a freeloader in my, in my, in my life at home and I know, and I'm not saying we would be a freeloader if we put one point five in. But I've always, in my own life, tried to, always tried to make sure that I've made, paid my fair share. And I think that we can look today at trying to save some budget money. Because that's what our job is here too, and I'm hearing that probably from other members of council that are wanting to reduce the amount. But I don't think this is the appropriate place to reduce. I think that we're in, we're investing in something that's extremely important to our community. I've been to that, I've been to that pool lots of times. I know there's county residents use it. I know that my own grandkids use it. And I know that the thirty percent says that that they're using it. And so the thing is, I don't want to in fact see that this pool become unsuccessful. There's a lot of unknowns for Innisville. They've taken this on with a lot of unknowns. All they're asking for us is the known portion. And I don't want to see, if we cut this back, we're only further limiting their chance for possibly. Not to be successful and I want them to be successful. So Counselor Master, I I would love to support your motion, but I can't today. Sorry.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. You haven't voted yet, so don't say yes or no yet. You know. We're there to support our communities. Times are tough. We're running out of cash. We've got to watch where we're spending. We can't fulfill every ask. But we have to participate. You know, one point eight, one point five, is it thirty percent? I think their number's a little high. When you look at memberships, when you look at rentals, we're nowhere near that thirty percent usage. I look at the county as a whole. Yes, Innisville's a wonderful pool, but so are the wonderful ones at the Colicutt Center and in Red Deer and in Olds and in Three Hills and in Stettler. Oh. Did I leave the county? I'm not allowed to talk about those ones. Where our ratepayers go and that they all need assistance. So yes, I believe in regionalization, but I also believe in living within our means. This Innisville pool is going forward with or without us. They've got the funds. Don't kid yourself. Innisville's made a decision to move forward. Now they're trying to lessen their burden. Oh, maybe we will go to Pendle and say, geez, some of your users use it, maybe you should contribute. And you know what? The Pendle residents do use it. When you walk in the door, they ask for five dollars or ten dollars or whatever it is. If you're short on money, maybe really hit the users with an increased fee in using it. I hear the schools use it. Which schools use it? The ones around Innisville? Not all the schools are using it. Some of the schools go down to Three Hills. Oh, we're getting grant money. And if we get grant money, our burden won't be so big. Where does this grant money come from? Of all, other levels of government, which are my ratepayers again. So my ratepayers are paying through the grants, through the user fees at the front door, and now they're paying through their taxes? Oh, by the way, once a year Innisville, you get your recreational check from the ratepayers as well. What were you using that money for? I know I've had that debate sitting around this table. Maybe some of that rec money that comes in the I C F should go towards a bank account for capital projects. Or do you spend all that money on operating and then keep asking for more and more and hurry up counting pay? And you're so rich, pay a lot. No, I think we're sending a message. We're fully supportive. We think your thirty percent number's a little high. Administration went out of their way to work out a good ten-year plan based on some contingencies. I just think they're a little high and my job is to make sure that I'm watching the ratepayers' funds. So I made the motion of one point five, not the one point eight, which turns out to be one point six five after the ten years, but I'll be long gone by then. So I stand by my motion. Please support me, Mr. Mayor, because that shows that we're supporting Innisville. Thank you.
I'd like to move that we move the number to one point eight million dollars as um, as recommended by administration. Pardon me? I'm allowed to do that.
Yeah, I thought I was closing, but I guess that's fine. Okay, it's not friendly.
Okay, we'll go around the table same way. Go ahead. Counselor De Palma.
Okay, sorry. So I I can't support that. You know, I realize that our residents use this, um, but I do agree with uh Counselor Masiya and. You know, the all, the whole thing is too, there's gotta be some more collaboration going forward. You know, to to do this and then the county has just given a dollar sum that we're supposed to contribute. Uh, you know, that is what some of my residents have been phoning me about and having the concern. And. When they phoned and asked some questions, they were told to phone their counselor. And when they phoned me. All I could say is, we had no say in anything. So um, I have a hard time. You know, if, so it's either uh. We, we're involved in the conversation or we're not. So um. So I I've really struggled with this because I do know and feel that we need to contribute. But in the same sense, we can't always just be come to for money without no contribution in, you know, the plan and things like that. And, you know, I do, the whole regional thing, that word is used and used and used and it is. The only people that get asked is Red Deer County. So um, I can't support. The amended amount. Yeah, I. Those are my comments right now.
Thank you, Counselor Kennett.
Can I have some clarity? Is it one point eight or is it one point nine eight?
Yes, I said uh, as as presented by administration, so it'll be the one uh, one point eight. Plus the the extra amount that they put into one point nine, whatever the number was shown on the screen. So as presented by administration's recommendation.
Thank you for that clarity. Can't support it. One point five is fair. Um, this is. For all the reasons Counselor Masiya said, we're asked from everyone. And not everyone in the county uses this. Um, one point five is very fair, quite frankly, and. You know, one point eight, well, that's great, but you know, times are tough. Let's get real. Let's start saving some money here. And this is, this is still one point five million towards a project that none of our neighbors are helping with at this point, so. You know, it's, if if they would like more, talk to the neighbors as well. That's fair. Thank you.
Counselor Ramsey.
Yeah, I can't support the amended amount. Uh, you know, as I, as I stated before, I I much preferred the the reduction.
Thank you, Counselor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. So Counselor Ramsey, uh, sorry, Counselor Ramsey, Counselor Masiya, you persuaded me to think. A little bit more deeply about this. And you're right, a lot of what you've said is true. And I remember we talked to Innisville about approaching other municipalities. Particularly Pendle and it wasn't, um, it didn't seem to be on the cards. So in light of what you just, how you closed. But you really didn't close, I know, but. The way you closed, it really made me think, and I think that's the beauty of the work that we do at this table because. We have heard that one point five was in the range. Is that correct, Director Brant?
Mr. Brown.
Through the C O to American Council, one point five to one point seven five was the best-case scenario minimum ask from the town of Innisville in their presentation.
Thank you for that uh clarification. And you know, we. We don't know what's coming down the path here for a future council, the asks, et cetera, et cetera. And I, you know, I will go with the one point five. You persuaded me. Thank you.
Counselor Master.
One point eight wasn't friendly, it still isn't.
Counselor Holsman. Very good. Okay, and I just want to come back to council. One of the reasons that I did this and and a, and a key thing is, is that. I I truly, I truly believe that whether we're at one point eight or one point five. The the number, the number is not that significant our side. But it is very significant on the side of ensuring the viability in the future of this pool. Um, truly know that the, that we actually utilize this pool, so there's no, there's no dispute on that. Um, but, you know, when folks start to understand that we're gonna just cut them back every time when we give a good number. Um, they're just gonna start giving higher numbers. And and I think the key thing is, is that. I think we did, we need to be fair with our communities. We know, we know that we're gonna get asks from other areas of our county. Every single area, and we'd have that happen all the time. And I think the key thing is, is that we want to recognize is that we've came up with a plan today. That al- allows us to in fact support a project over a period of time rather than take all that cash out immediately. And I, and I think that, you know, that's one of the important things that I think at least we're doing today, even for future, is is identifying ways that we can help. Uh, because we cannot afford to build these facilities on our own. And if we had to, we'd be put. And if we had to, we'd be putting out the full twelve million dollars ourselves. And, and that's just something we can't afford to do. So it's good to have great partners. You know, I, it wasn't like we haven't had some discussion on this matter. We did have discussion through, on ICF. And unfortunately, unfortunately, we weren't able to come up with the, with the, with the big building that they needed. Because, to be honest with you, I couldn't have probably supported that either. Then it would have been too big of a number. I can support keeping that facility there. Anyway, I know I'm not going to get support for this, but I, I thought it was extremely important that I was able to make my motion. So, all those in favor? By myself, that's okay. All those opposed? Thank you. And now you're going to give me a chance to be able to vote for it, because otherwise I'd had to vote for giving the money at all. So now I want you to understand why I just did. Counselor Massey's motion comes back to the floor. You want to, you want to, you want to, I'll let you for the closing if you choose, sir. Okay, now we've had our fun. All those in favor? All those opposed? So Counselor, DePalm and Counselor Ramsey were opposed. The remainder were in favor. The motion has been carried. We have a request for a break. We'll take a break. We'll come back at ten fifty. Okay, we're going pretty fast here.
Well, that was a long one to start the day.
The last thing that I wanted to do was vote again.
Recreation and culture support for urban municipalities policy. Is that Mr. Brandt over there again? Good morning, you're busy this morning.
It is. Unfortunately for you, you get me for three in a row this morning, so. So this one is to discuss and to consider approving Council Policy C one zero five twenty-five, which is going to be called Recreation and Culture Support to Urban Municipalities. This is to replace the, or to consider replacing current policy five point zero zero four, Support to Urban Municipalities, which was last updated in October twenty twenty, and really it was updated only to the consideration of the ICF frameworks with respect to the operating agreements and then further requirements for submissions of capitals, capital funding requests. Prior to that, the policy hadn't been updated since two thousand and twelve, so it had been quite some time. The proposed policy establishes guidelines for the Rec and Culture Operating Grant Agreements that we have with urban municipalities located within Red Deer County, as well as capital project funding contribution requests, such as the one that was just considered prior to break. The financial implications of this, so current policy states that the payment schedule is fifty percent at approval and fifty percent at completion. And this new policy modifies it to a schedule of council's choosing. So you could still do that. You could still do fifty fifty. Maybe it was a smaller request or something like that, or you had the cash position to do it. But you can also do what was similar to the motion that was approved on the last one, where it could be deferred over a period of time that's related to the lifespan of the capital facility. That helps reflect our current cash flow position as well as the current asks that are coming in that we're seeing come into the county. And there are no changes financially in this policy with respect to the Recreation and Culture Operating Grant Agreements. Intergovernmental implications, obviously this deals with how we are supporting urban municipalities, so it does have implications. There are none with respect to the operating grant agreements, because it mirrors the current process. That process has stayed similar throughout. The changes with respect to capital include requirement for capital funding requests to first go through an ICF committee. So if a municipality was asking the county for money, they would bring that up while in advance so that the county would be well, well informed, that was the word I was looking for, going through. And also gives the ability for council to determine a payment schedule, as previously mentioned, under financial implications. The proposed policy aligns with the guiding principles, and the new policy framework that's, that's there, or the new policy template, if you will, actually puts those guiding principles right up front. So Red Deer County supports the use of and access to recreation and cultural facilities and programs offered by urban municipalities for Red Deer County residents. And Red Deer County contributes to the capital operating and maintenance cost of urban municipality facilities and programs that support use and access by county residents. So those guiding principles apply. Standard communication, so nothing, nothing outside of the norm that's proposed for this one. So everything would just be as per normal. And the alternatives available to council are to approve the proposed policy as presented, to direct administration to amend it, so give us some specific direction on how to amend it, or to deny approval of the proposed policy, which leaves the current policy five point zero zero four in effect. And our recommendation is that council approve the, approve, approve the proposed council policy C one zero five two five, Recreation and Culture Support to Urban Municipalities as presented.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Moore.
I, I don't have any questions. I'm ready for a motion if, when you need it.
Thank you. Counselor Master.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions. You've got some specifics in here, what it covers and what it doesn't cover. Is that necessary? All of a sudden, the playground's not covered by this policy, and I don't know if I was reading operating or capital. And a spray park is, under your open park. And I seen some playground bids for some fancy playgrounds, and they're, they're not cheap. And so can you explain to me why you have some items not eligible versus leaving a little more discretion for future council? Thank you.
Mr. Brandt.
Certainly, through the CAO to Maran Council, open space amenities such as parks, playgrounds and trails are not considered eligible, because there's actually another policy that council's going to consider right after this that they would potentially be eligible under, as well as other funding streams that are available. So it's, it's to make sure that there's not a double dip on those types of, of facilities. And, and then one, this is a notorious one, spray or splash parks, which are kind of like an outdoor playground typically, but they do, they, they require considerably more infrastructure to operate, because they have pumps and chlorination facilities to meet codes. So that's why they would qualify under this policy, whereas other things wouldn't, because there's another policy that could apply to how we, how council may wish to fund those.
Okay, and if I may continue, Mr. Mayor, and I guess skateboard park slips in there kind of like a playground, but kind of with a pump, because it's got some cement. The other one is indoor arenas, including arenas, not necessarily indoor. Or are those indoor arenas, is that where I drive my horse or throw a curling rock? Or is that just where I play hockey?
Yes, through CAO to Maran Council, so it, it could potentially be any of those things, but then the other caveat is there in, in section eight of the definitions that says it must be publicly accessible. And so you have to have the right of access as a public member. So a place that sold private memberships, for example, would not qualify only private memberships, like if they didn't have publicly accessible. And that would be a consideration that council could consider when they, when they look at a request. So we, we don't want to write it so narrow as that it might exclude some things that council wished they could fund. But on the flip side, it gives you that discretion. So it could, could include indoor or outdoor arenas. It could include agricultural arenas or hockey arenas. And if council so wished, it could include curling arenas, or it could not, depending on the way that they operate that facility.
And my last question would be, and I think you just explained it to me. You don't feel this policy is going to tie administration's hands? You're going to have some discretion that you can come to council with? I think that's what I just heard right there, so.
Yeah, through the CAO to Maran Council, we think this is a vast improvement over the current policy. The current policy actually requires the municipality to come to administration first, and for administration to vet the request, which requires us to do a significant amount of work before even finding out if council wants to consider it. So the way that this is framed now, it goes to the ICF committee. Council, the ICF committee can then talk to council. Council can provide some direction to administration. And, and we do believe that there's lots of discretion in here for council.
Counselor Holsman.
That was going to be my question, and would come directly to the ICF committee for discussion and debate, and then come to council. Thank you.
Counselor DePalm.
I don't have any questions.
Counselor Kenna.
I have a question, a couple actually. In the policy you've presented, Guiding Principles Four, Red Deer County contributes capital operating maintenance costs of urban. I'm wondering why we don't have a may in there? I know we've changed a lot of our land use bylaws to may and not from shell. Now, to me, the way it's written right now, it's, we must. It might just be a wordsmithing thing, if you have any consideration for that, if I could hear that.
Mr. Brandt.
Yes, through CAO to Maran Council, I, I don't think there's an administrative concern if, if there need to be a word change in that one. I mean, they are, they are council's guiding principles, so I, I can't speak specifically to what the ICF say, other than that they say you'll, you'll discuss those things. So I think, you know, Red Deer County may contribute. Instead of Red Deer County contributes is an appropriate, would be an appropriate change. And, and I don't know if, if Manager Rodwell has, she's shaking her head no. So she, I don't think she has any concerns there either.
I'll catch everybody's interim.
The other one I was wondering about, the definitions, number nine, urban municipality, means an incorporated municipality other than Red Deer County located entirely within the geographical perimeter. Does that include Sylvan Lake?
Mr. Brandt.
Through the CAO to Maran Council, yes, that does include Sylvan Lake. So technically, the, the Red Deer County boundary goes around. Through the CAO to Mayor and Council, yes, that does include Sylvan Lake. So technically, the, the Red Deer County boundary goes around Sylvan Lake.
Okay.
Yeah. So it does, it, so it includes all of our similar, includes all of our urban municipalities with whom we have ICFs. That was a, that was a, that's a fun one on how legislatively, how to word that. And that was the wording that, that was recommended we put in there. So it would include those.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted a little clarity on those. Thanks.
Counselor Ramsey, looking for a motion. Counselor Moore?
Before I do that, can I ask a quick question, please?
Oh, sure.
About the may, the, the verbiage there. So the, the fact that we say we do contribute, Red Deer County contributes, that's based on what we actually do?
Mr. Brand?
Yeah, so through the CAO to Mayor and Council, yeah, the, the guiding principle saying we do contribute is, is because we do, but that certainly, I think to Counselor Kennett's comment, and, and if the policy, we give a future council a little more leeway to decide what they do by putting may in there.
Perfect, thank you. So with that, I would, I would move that we approve Council Policy Number C 105-25, Recreation and Culture Support to Urban Municipalities, to replace Policy Number 5.004. So I really like this. It hasn't been looked at for 13 years, so it's timely. And it, it, it really does reflect our new reality in that these big capital asks can be quite overwhelming to Red Deer County when they come. And we know that we can't build our own facilities. Well, we could, but they would cost us, as Ma Wood said earlier, upwards of 12, 15 million per, per facility. So we need to do this. So I, that's my rationale for supporting this, this new policy.
Just a question, Counselor Kennett made a suggestion of changing that word to may. Is that included in your motion or not?
I was wondering, was it appropriate right now, or is it something that we would revisit? I don't know, I'm asking administration. Yeah. So I, I can live with may, because I think there is sometimes an expectation that we're like the rich uncle, you know, and that we'll always come to the table. So I do like the fact that we have the leeway to decide, and exactly what Director Brand said about the work that has to be done before, which, which is, which can be quite onerous. So yes, I will take that as a friendly amendment to my motion. Thank you.
Well, it wouldn't be amendment, you're making the motion, you just put it included if you wanted to.
I'm amending the nine point, what was it, Counselor Kennett? Number four? Guiding principle number four, to switch to may. Thank you.
Discussion, Counselor Masser?
Yeah. Boy, and it's a guiding principle, and the way the mayor talks, as a principle, we support, and we always support. It's, the debatable is the amount. But then I read it a little closer, and it says, "We will support to the capital and the operating and the maintenance." Well, sometimes we don't support all those. We support bigot capital and we leave maintenance alone. So I think may does fit in there. May doesn't limit us, but may says we might do it this way, we might do it that way, and the guy in principle says we, we're going to do it, so. We're wordsmithing, but yeah, when you start reading documents like this, and it says you will, I'd hate someone to stick us, so. We'll help capital operating, you're on your own for maintenance, and then we're covered under the may. So I'm going to support that motion as amended. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Holsman?
Thank you. I, I really like the new policy. I think it gives us a lot of more parameters and guidelines for future council. And I too agree, the word may, especially when it's maintenance. That's the, the word that I was hung up on, because capital and operating, we can take a look at, but maintenance is a whole different ballgame. So right now, I, I like it, and I think it gives us an administration parameter to work with, and I'll totally support it.
Thank you. Counselor DePalm?
Yeah, I'll totally support this. I, I just want to give thanks for, you know, the report. And I think, you know, we've discussed all these kind of new things that are in this policy, and and it, I think reflects where we were trying to go to in the first place. So I think it's a great report, and I definitely support the policy update.
Thank you. Counselor Kenna?
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, I support with the amendment, of course. I think this gives an update to an older policy, and I like the fact that there's a five-year look at it again, just to keep things fresh. Who knows what happens in five years, but I think this is a great policy that will help not only us, but our partners, you know, the ICFs and everything else, on how we should be doing things here. Thank you.
Counselor Ramsey?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Wood, and, and I'll definitely support the policy. I, I think it's a great update. It, it certainly gives us a little more financial flexibility. And, you know, in my first read-through, I actually wanted to be a little more specific in parts, but when you, when you think about it from all sides, I think getting too specific could put us in, in more difficult situations in the future. So I, I do actually like how it is, is broad, and, and gives us flexibility.
Thank you. And before you close, I'll, I'll just make a couple of comments. I'm definitely going to support this. You know, definitely one of the largest unknowns sometimes that we have come against, you know, come forward. And, and the way the policy is written before, you know, if we chose to support and follow our own policy, it could really hurt our budgets. And so I, I like, I like the way this is going. I, I think what it also does is, is it allows other municipalities to take a look at our policy and have an idea what they might want to ask for, because I think that's extremely important. And, and, you know, we, we always used to say, we'll just bring it forward and we'll see what happens. But I think that this, this makes it a lot more clear. And so anyways, I'm definitely supporting your motion.
Thank you, Ma Wood. Great, great comments from my fellow counselors. I think one thing, this really allows the applicant as well to know they're not going to get a big chunk of change upfront, and that we can be, we, it's in, we will decide, and we're not confined to decide, you know, what the terms are. So I love the flexibility, and I think it will be very responsive to any cash flow situations we may have in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is the last one before I turn it over to everybody else. The, this is one more policy. So this is a policy that we just kind of alluded to in the previous discussion. This one's got a much longer title, Development of Open Spaces Grants from Municipal Reserves to Nonprofits. Used to be called Use of MR. So we got wordier with the policy title. The, this is to consider approving, this is Paul, Council Policy C 10625, Development of Open Spaces Grants from Municipal Reserves to Nonprofits. The current policy 5.006, Use of Municipal Reserves, was last updated in February 2007. So this one is long overdue for an update and a relook. The proposed policy here establishes guidelines for how council would grant municipal reserve funds to another entity to develop a community open space within the county, or for any other purposes that are allowed under the MGA, which, the, there are MGA rules around how you can use municipal reserve. The financial implications of this proposed policy, so as you can, it, it changes things a little bit from lump sum upon completion, or 50% at approval and completion for funding under 100,000. So, so for smaller projects, you could just do that and get it out of the way. Understand that there's sometimes some hesitancy to want to give money and not necessarily be sure where it goes. So it's nice to say, hey, we'll, we'll hold on to some of the check until you complete the project, the way you said you were going to. But then also, it introduces the opportunity for projects over 100,000 to again defer payments in, into some sort of payment plan. And that would be entirely at the discretion of the council, and entirely based on the context of the ask and the plan, again reflecting current cash flow positions. So instead of somebody coming in and saying, hey, in five years, I'm going to build something, and I need a million dollars now to build it, because I can't go unless I have that million dollars, you could look at it and say, well, we've got a million dollars in reserve, but we'll, we'll spread that out over the five years, or however that works, just as an example. The public implications of this, this policy aligns with, again, some guiding principles here. I don't think there's anything in these guiding principles that, that ties it quite as tightly as the catch in the last one, but supports the use and development of community open space to provide recreational and cultural opportunities. The county may collect cash in lieu contributions from land developers, as indicated in the land use bylaw. So sometimes we actually, planning and development will require land use to do municipal reserve and do a development inside their development. Other times, it's not appropriate to have the municipal reserve in that development. And so then we collect cash in lieu of that, so we can put it in a more appropriate place in the county, is what that's for. And the guiding principle that the county encourages partnerships with nonprofits, school boards, and other municipalities to support development of community open space. Standard communications on this one, nothing planned, so just the normal agenda and how it's going. And the alternatives available to council are approve the proposed policy C 10625, or direct us to amend it and give us specific direction on the amendments you'd like to see considered, or deny approval, which would leave the current policy 5.006 from a long time ago in place. And our recommendation is that council approve the proposed policy, C 10625 Development of Open Spaces Grants from Municipal Reserves to Nonprofits as presented.
Yes, I have a, a question for you. The cash in lieu part of it for developers, is it, like, do you base, if they're going to do, say, a playground, for example, in an open space, do you base it on an industry standard of what a playground costs, or how, how does that work where you determine what the amount is, I guess?
Yeah, certainly, I could, I can take a stab at it, and then, and then if Director Miller wants to correct me, she, she can. The, the MGA specifically says what municipalities are allowed to take in terms of percentage of developable land. And so it's, it's just based on the percentage of land developed. So if, if there were 100 acres and 10% of that was municipal reserve, you would take the market value of the 10 acres of land, and that's, that's a cash in lieu contribution. That then they write a check to the county, and then we could then take that money and, and use it somewhere else to build a playground or trail or something like that.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I would give you the motion. Sorry, I changed off the. So I would move to approve Council Policy Number C 106-25 Development of Open Spaces, Grants from Municipal Reserves to Nonprofits as presented to replace Policy Number 5.006, Use of Municipal Reserve Funds. I think this is great, and, you know, it definitely needed an update, and I really like how it was all laid out, and, you know, totally support it.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Fully supportive, but maybe I just missed it in your report, Mr. Brand, but this has given us some flexibility into the future to pay for some of these things, maybe. A school is nonprofit. A school needs some land to build a new school. Don't we have to, you can't do that over time. I get the playground inside that schoolyard, but does this affect future use of MRs for future school grounds, future, whatever you want to call it, land for schools? Or is that a different department? But isn't that MR land, MR money that we use there as well?
Mr. Brand?
Yeah, through CAO to Mayor and Council, and this one, I may definitely ask Director Miller to provide some, some input. But school reserve, so a municipality can dedicate land over for school reserve, that's a different designation under the MGA, if you will. But outdoor spaces at a school could potentially be considered under this policy. So if, if a school was developing and they wanted to develop outdoor fields or playgrounds or something, they could apply to the county to help fund those playgrounds.
Under this policy. But what about the land for the school itself? Is MR, does that affect it, or is something else going on here?
No, we, this wouldn't, this wouldn't affect any of that, because the school would come forward. They would still seek land that they would turn to school reserve, which is a dedicated space where only a school can be built until it gets turned back again.
As long as this doesn't tie our hands for that usage, then I'm good with it. Okay.
Any other comments? Would you like to close your, your motion? Always in favor. Carried unanimously. Continuing on to item number 5.4, Road Naming, and that's Springbrook to C and E Trail. Just got to get my computer working. Okay, good morning, Mr. Cullum.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I guess we don't have the presentation. I knew it was in there. Thank you. All right. So today we're here to consider an amendment to the road name previously approved by council on April 1st, 2025. So on April 1st, council did approve a road name within Red Deer Regional Airport to be named Airport Way. The road is in, is a continuation of Airport Drive within the hamlet of Springbrook, heading north to Township Road 374, then turning west to C and E Trail. Administration is requesting the portion of Township Road 374 that turns west to C and E Trail revert to the original named Township Road 374, as shown on Schedule A. The continuation of Airport Drive within the hamlet of Springbrook heading north to Township Road 374 will remain as established on April 1st, 2025 as Airport Way, and the portion circled in red will revert to Township Road 374. So my recommendation, our, administration's recommendation is to grant approval to amend the resolution, CC 25052, to revert a portion of Airport Way back to Township Road 374. And that is all I.
Thank you. Counselor Holsman? Questions?
I guess the simple question is, what happened that we have to rename it? That would be my simple question. Sorry.
Through, through, through council to Mayor and Council, through CAO to Mayor and Council, sorry. It was more resident, residents that got upset about having to change their, their addresses to a different address. And looking back at it, it just made more sense to keep this portion of the road to as 374, because nothing has really changed otherwise, so.
So my next question from the report, it says everything will be paid for by, from the county for their costs or whatever. There are blue signs, and there wasn't, doesn't look like there was a whole bunch of people on that road anyway, correct?
No, there, through the CAO to Mayor and Council, so there were only two residents affected by this. Nothing got changed at this time. So the costs that will incur are the same costs that we would have incurred anyways, to put up the road signage and names. Yeah.
Counselor DePalm, any questions? Does anyone have any questions? Okay, we do. Counselor Moore?
Thanks for the report. I did hear about this one from a friend of mine who was going to be affected. The question that people, that he asked me was, what was the process? Were they told this was going to happen?
Through CAO to Mayor and Council, so talking with P and D, it was just decided to get done, but we, we didn't notify anyone of it, that we were doing it. So, yeah, we didn't notify anyone. And talking with P and D, that typically wasn't the process.
That typically wasn't the process that we were aware of for, for doing that.
Perfect. Thanks for being so candid. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Mr. Beer. On Schedule B, you've got some yellow lines and some green lines. And a red circle around some yellow lines. Can you tell me the green line on Schedule B, is that gravel or paved?
Through the CAO to mayor and council, that is all paved.
And can you tell me that little yellow section of Township Road three seventy four that's circled by a red? Circle. Is that gravel or is that paved?
That will be paved. So all that.
The other yellow line that's on Schedule B is going to be paved or gravel?
It'll be paved.
Thank you. Nope, but three seventy four heading east is a paved road as well.
Yeah, it's currently a chip seal road. Yep.
Okay, so they're all paved, all three of those little chunks up there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Looking for a motion. Counselor Cannon.
Thank you. Uh, so I would move we grant approval to amend resolution CC twenty five zero five two. To revert a portion of the Airport Way back to Township Road three seven four. Thank you.
Any discussion? Counselor Moore. Go in the same direction.
Thanks, Mayor Wood. Um, so I will definitely support this motion. Uh, and I think, um, I, I think this is a really good example of, um. You know, we listened to the residents and the inconvenience and maybe lessons learned about consultation in the future. Um, but this is great to see and it doesn't look like it's a, it only affects two people and it's not such a huge deal. So thank you for this.
Counselor Massier.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I remember the debate on this one when we came forward to us, and the whole idea was economic driver down to that airport. To get in and out of the airport. You're coming down to C and E Trail. And there's gonna be a sign that says, turn left a hundred meters Airport Way. And people that are from not this area will find our airport easily. How is that concern gonna be addressed now? Is it gonna be airport, take Township three seventy four and then turn right on Airport Way? Are we changing our signage? I, I thought the whole idea of economic driver was to brag that we've got an airport way that takes you to the airport. And so I'm really hoping we do something with signage to encourage that economic development. Because I think because two people didn't wanna change their mailing address. We're gonna change that vision of the airport I don't agree with. So I'm not supporting the motion. And I hope you put up good signage on C and E Trail that says take three seventy four before Airport Way. So I don't need an answer. I can support the motion right now.
Counselor Holsman, comments?
Mayor Wood, I do just wanna clarify that we're first doing a motion to reconsider. Um, so this is the motion to reconsider the resolution previously passed.
Well, this is the motion to reconsider. Was that, that wasn't what I heard, though. That was what I heard? Who made the, Counselor Cannon, did you make a motion to reconsider? And, and in order to make a motion to reconsider, that person had to be in favor in the first place. So we're, we're aware of who made, who was in favor and not that day. Yeah, is this? Okay. That's what you're doing? Okay. Alright. Motion to reconsider is on the floor. Um, um, I'm the only one hasn't spoke to this and. I'm not gonna support, I'm not gonna support uh, the, the recommend to change today. For the exact same reason that Counselor, that Counselor Messer has identified. Um, I, I believe that we had a, a vision for this road. It, it is the road that leads directly into the airport. Um, if we make too many juggles back and forth with people, um, I, I don't think that's, that's appropriate. This road is like, why I see it's different is if you take a look at the map, we actually see it lying like this. Um, and it's, and, and I see, I see that road as a natural curve and it naturally takes us that way. So, um, I can't, I can't support, I can't support the motion to reconsider. I'm happy with the way we had it before. I, I, two people, if we have to pay two people's cost to change their address and we're, and that's their natural product. You know what? We pay, we pay for their costs. They're really, they're really, they're really, you know what? It's just one of those things. Wouldn't be the first time that we've had to do that in order to have names, roads named appropriately. So you can go ahead and close.
Yeah, thank you for that. And to Counselor Massey's point, the sign could still say this way to Airport Way. It's still, you gotta turn down this road to go to Airport Way. Um, you know, and. I think it helps differentiate when you are on the airport, when you're headed into the airport versus still on Township three seventy four. I think uh, it'd be very confusing for people uh, trying to figure out other ways. Um, so I, I think this is a pretty minor thing and the Airport Way still stands. And it's delineated very specifically at that junction. So people know when they're into the airport. So I think this is a good way to go. Thank you.
Okay, so we have motion on the floor. Um, all those in, all those in favor? Opposed. A motion's been carried. Uh, Counselor Master and I were opposed. Um, so now we will go to any changes we wanna make to this motion now. We can now talk about that.
So this motion is Counselor De Palms. Um, so we're reverting back to Counselor De Palm having a motion on the floor. And if Counselor De Palm sees fit, she can amend her motion, uh, should, should she so choose. In alignment with the recommendation from administration.
Counselor De Palm, move to the floor.
So I would move to, uh. Grant approval to request the road name adjacent to Red Deer, continuing Airport Drive to Township three seventy four. To be named Airport Way. Is that the right? Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, go around the room for discussion. Counselor Cannon.
Just for clarity, are you wanting the whole road?
So the original motion was continuing Airport Drive from Township Road three seventy four to C and E Trail to be named Airport Way. And it's been amended to Airport Drive to Township Road three seventy four to be named Airport Way.
Okay, yeah. That's all what she said, though, was it? It is?
Okay.
Oh, it is? Okay, good.
I, I just missed her. Sorry. Thank you for that clarity.
Okay, um, I, I, when I, when I'm sure you're, when you're sure you're complete, Counselor Cannon, we'll go to Counselor Ramsey. Counselor Moore, Counselor Massier.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, question, when I'm coming from the east on Township Road three seventy four. I'm going to hit Airport Way at a stop sign. Is that correct?
Through the CAO to mayor and council, that is correct.
And then I turn right on to, back on to three seventy four or I turn left on to Airport Way. I take it that's where the transition's going to occur. And I just don't understand how I've got a stop sign on three seventy four and then turn on to three seventy four again. So no, I'm, uh, I can't support this name change. I think we're building a new road that goes from the airport out to C and E Trail. It needs its own name. Not a little jog of three seventy four and keep two residents happy by letting them stay at three seventy four. Modernize. You're on a brand new road that takes you to the airport. It's now called Airport Way. I can't support these motions.
Um, Counselor Holsman, uh, counts, who made that motion? Counselor Cannon? Counselor De Palm, okay. Um, before you close, um, my thoughts haven't changed. But I do have one question for administration on these roads because. The size of the road. Um, you mentioned that, that these are all paved roads and one's chip sealed. But the new road, um, is it chip sealed or paved? And second question is, is that the size of the new road, um, are they similar? Or this, or is the new road a lot larger than the old three seventy four?
Through the CAO to mayor and council, so the, the new road is a paved road. Um, it'll be currently, it'll currently be the same width or very similar to the same width as three seventy four. Um, but in the future, when that road does get expanded, it will be basically double in width. In the future, but currently it is the same width.
Okay, so works, so, and, and any idea of when that future will be? No, no, depending on traffic.
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor De Palm, you're closed. You already did?
I'm good.
You're good. Okay. Alright, all those in favor? Opposed. Uh, motion's been, when carried, Counselor Messer and I were both opposed. Okay, continuing on to item number, I'm just gonna hold that one. We're gonna go to item number. Number five point six, division of administration under the chief administrative, administrative officer. Okay, who's that? That'd be a.
Uh, one moment. The, uh, author of this report did not bother to do a PowerPoint, so.
Okay.
He's kinda that, he's kinda difficult to deal with. Um, report itself is not that long. I can get started into it, really. Uh, this is an item that is a follow-up from recommendations of the Cuff Report on Governance. And uh, in that, in those recommendations, it included a recommendation to include a chief financial officer. Reporting directly to the CAO. Also in there included, oh, there we go, thanks. Also included, uh. The change in the, the county manager's bylaw to CAO and it included. What was the other piece this touched? Yeah, I think that's pretty much it. So, oh yes, and, and in the CAO bylaw, it also included a, a new. Procedure, which is what we're dealing with today, which is the discussion of the first level of the org chart with council. It was felt by Mr. Cuff that the highest, uh, level of the org chart should be something that. Uh, the CAO and council has had an opportunity to discuss and that the council would have the. Uh, ability to approve that. So we have a default one in position and I've shown you in the report. Both the current one and the proposed one and uh, suggesting this would be probably the most suitable way to deal with. The recommendation from Mr. Cuff, and I believe it's probably one of the only recommendations he had given to admin to deal with. And I felt the need to get it done, quite frankly. So it's in front of you today. Um, I did discuss this, uh, full disclosure, we had a little discussion about this in my CAO's meeting as well, as it does often. Uh, lead one to start to reflect upon names that sit within boxes. But in the governance report, it's very clear that the names are not, uh, necessarily for this open debate or discussion. The organization as it sits and the way in which, uh, it looks at the very top of the org chart is, uh, what's up for discussion. So what you have in front of you is a proposed revision and a recommendation to, uh, move to that. And uh, yeah, this will be the first time, I think, in Red Deer County's history. You, uh, if you follow municipal news, uh, Medicine Hat was actually dealing with a similar item like this. When they first started having some fun this term with, uh, the way in which the CAO was doing reorganizations in the city. And I think Mr. Cuff had been there once before and I believe that there was a, a need to have this, uh. This considered by council, by art, by their council at that time. So this is not dissimilar to other communities in the way that it goes about. And um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If there are questions in regards to people in those positions, we would go in camera.
Thank you. Are we seeing any questions? Well, lots of, start with Counselor Massier.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. No, my question's got nothing to do with the specificity of the people. That's your business. Right now on the top chart, and that's our go back to. You've got it that the Assistant CAO is also the Director of Corporate Services. Are you bound by that if we go back to that? Could not the Assistant CAO be the Director of a different department? And so is it limited to just the corporate services one? I know that's how it is now, but. Does this policy or whatever we're playing with right now force you to have the Assistant CEO? And Director of Corporate Services, the same person, cuz they're in the same box? Much like your proposed organizational chart says. The Director of Corporate Services slash must be a CFO. Do I read that slash as a must? Or it's proposed, but it maybe is not going to be. Right now, I don't know if the Director of Corporate Services is the CFO. You've proposed that it might be into the future. But maybe in the next future, you propose to have it not a CFO. So I guess, is this tying your hands to these exact words as presented in front of us? Or would you prefer more flexibility that I'm under the impression you have? I don't wanna tie your hands tighter than they're already tied. So did you get a question out of that, Mr. Mayor?
Well, comment on a question, but um, I, I, I think that there is a question in there. So, Mr. Hurstburg, if you can answer that.
Yeah, try to build an answer around that for sure. Uh, it, it may impede mine or any future CAO's, um. Uh, hands a little bit, certainly more than it, it had in the past. Uh, I wouldn't say that our organizational chart is kept secret. It's a pretty. Uh, pretty open document in terms of that, and I certainly wouldn't, um. I would say over my years here with the county, I certainly have had discussions with council when it comes to people in these positions, cuz you see them the most often. So I don't think it's been necessarily as official in the past, but when there's been changes, uh, there have been discussions. You make a good point about the Assistant CAO. I'll, I'll address that part first and then move to the CFO position. And that in the future, with, with a different makeup of, uh, the directorship. It is possible that, um, the next candidate to be an Assistant CAO would exist. Uh, through experience, through, through seniority, through a variety of reasons, could exist in one of the other boxes. It's not terribly difficult for myself or a future CAO, simply to bring that back and make, make that recommendation, that that be the case. Uh, it's, it's certainly not, not the end of the world in that regard. I guess theoretically or technically, I could, uh. We all know the Director of Operations, so I'll use him as the example, Mr. Campbell. If, if he were to be the next Assistant CAO. One could argue, I would just leave him, I could put him in both boxes for that matter. Um, I believe what Mr. Cuff was mostly getting to is, was the principle of, of council understanding. That this level of the org chart does, if this is being, if this is seeing a major change, there's change. There's a good chance we're having an impactful conversation about the way in which the counties may be doing services. So it should be a open conversation between myself and future councils. So I think it covers that. Um, arguably, when it comes to the CFO. I, 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 I can, um, willingly support all the recommendations of the governance report. But I would point out that our Director of Operations is not a professional engineer and one could argue that they should be perhaps. That's okay. I, I, there, there's elements of, of the, the, the nature of, of the reporting and the, the CFO itself. That, uh, I, I'm not, I'm not sure that, um. In every, in every circumstance, that, that other organizations have a CFO that directly reports to CAO. I'm comfortable with it, though, and I think it makes sense, uh, for, for our particular circumstance.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And I also heard that, um, CAO and future councils can tweak this chart.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, and just to change it up a little bit, cuz we're going one direction all morning and you know what? Sometimes it changes when you have to follow everyone else, so we'll just go the other way around. And I do know that Counselor Moore does wanna, wanna speak to this anyway, so this is questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thanks for the report, CAO Hasburg. So, and I understand in that, in the future, the Director of Corporate Services would be a CFO. Would be, would be a, a professional with a financial designation.
In regards to the qualifications of the Director of Corporate Services. A, uh, an accounting designation does not necessarily a prerequisite of being a chief financial officer. Uh, it is most likely that would be though.
Most likely. Happy to hear that. And, um, I'm just looking at the, 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 the org chart, so no people, just position. I know there was conversation about the necessity for the Assistant CAO and if that could be shared between directors when the CAO is absent. Cuz that could avoid, and of course, they'd be paid accordingly for their time, but it would eliminate that Assistant CEO position.
Yeah, and it's not something I would be willing to, uh, contemplate at this point in the nature of our current HR structure. It would not make sense to eliminate the position of Assistant CAO.
Thank you for that. Would you see it in the future, maybe?
I believe there's a definite possibility that, that, uh, one could see the Assistant CAO position. Make its way back into one of the other boxes, so to speak. Yeah.
Counselor Ramsey. Counselor Cannon.
Just a question. With this org chart, uh, the difference is the Assistant CAO could fill in any department. If need be for whatever reason. Is that correct?
Yes, when one looks at the, uh, descriptions of an Assistant CAO, I think generally you should consider it, uh, as an individual. That, uh, has the ability to. that has the ability to, uh, have the... The authority of the CAO delegated to them and oversee those different departments. So, that is absolutely a possibility, yes.
Thank you.
Councilor DePalm. Okay, um, Council, where do I start? Hey, I'm looking... We need a motion. Volunteers for a motion.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Wood. Uh, I certainly would move staff recommendation for the... The proposed organizational chart. You know, this... This is in alignment with the Governance Review, so, you know, I think this is kind of checking a box that way. I do... I do like the way that we kind of managed a vacancy over the past few years, using that Assistant CAO as opposed to, you know, necessarily, uh, having an extra staff member. So, I... I think that was well-done, and, uh, given... Given where we're at now, um, moving ahead, so the... The proposed chart makes sense for the situation we're in.
Thank you. I gotta continue around. Councilor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. So, I... I would, um... I would support this, uh, org chart. I am especially happy to see that a CFO, um, uh, would, uh, in the future, um, be the leader and the Director of our Corporate Services. I think... I think that's really important with the budgets that we deal with, the amount of money. Um, so I'm happy to see that. For now, I can live with the Assistant CAO on the org chart, but I do look to the future and hope that that position can be absorbed and give directors professional development in that leadership position when, um, when the CAO is absent. My comments for now, thank you.
Councilor Messier.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Looking at the org chart and its potential for flexibility and changes into the future, I can accept. But when I look at the report itself, six recommendations, you talk about amending the divisions of administration under the CAO as follows, and you list your five directors, or four directors, and Assistant CAO. But you don't talk about human resources or legislative services. Is that an oversight, or... Why weren't they included in those bullets under recommendations?
Mr. Hersberg.
So, it was, I think, in the previous org chart as well. It had been recently, like in the last several years, it had been moved over. We had a history of, um, HR reporting into the Director of Corporate Services prior. That has not been my desire. I think that, uh, for a variety of reasons, which probably aren't open and public reasons, uh, having HR and the manager of HR report directly to me is more appropriate. Uh, it's very typical, and not unlike the situation where these are directors for the other positions, but you have two managers in there, uh, steadfast beside me here, Samantha, and as well Jen on the HR side. Uh, it's a bit of a span. Uh, I don't think it's an overreach in terms of the span of control, but I would say that... That I would note that that has actually not been around a very long time, in terms of HR reporting directly to my office. Uh, but it's certainly, I think, an important improvement that we made several years ago.
So, and I agree that if you want them to report directly to you, that's fine. My point is they're not listed under the recommendations. And so, is that the oversight? Should they also be in the recommendation that...
Uh, through the CAO to council. Uh, the CAO's bylaw is extremely clear that council approves the divisions of administration. You do not approve the organizational chart. So, this is the splitting of responsibilities. This isn't the job title, so even in there, you'll see that it doesn't say Corporate Services slash CFO. It just says Corporate Services, because that's the division. And Mr. Hersberg has indicated to you that the leader of that division will be the Director of Corporate Services slash CFO. So, he's given you additional information, um, beyond what's just being requested by the CAO bylaw.
What I heard there is it's not the org chart I'm looking at, it's the actual recommendations in the bylaw. Thank you very much.
Councilor Holsman.
No, I totally support this. I... This is what the Governance Review is about, and I'm happy to hear our manager's comments that he can support it. And, um, I look forward to getting it passed. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor DePalm. Councilor Kenna. You're good, and I'm good. Do you'd like to close, so? Okay, all those in favor? Share unanimously. Thank you. Okay, uh, let's see, the next one, we can go to item number 6.1. I wasn't here for that... For that hearing, folks, so I will not be allowed to vote on that. I'm not even sure the rules. I don't really think I'm allowed to comment on it. I'll just try to be very quiet here today and share... And share it, okay? So, if that... If that works, if that works for everyone, but could we hear the... Mr. Barr, good to see you today.
Good morning, good to see you as well.
Okay, so I should leave? Okay.
We want to double-check this. It's a very important document. We don't want to have a...
I'll tell you what I'm gonna do. I'll tell you what, I have the option at any time to leave the room.
Mayor Wood, Mayor Wood, sorry, if you could just let me finish.
Yep.
Lunch is ready, if you want a recess for lunch. You can do that, and we'll have an answer for you as soon as we get back.
Okay, I'm gonna call recess. It's 11:46. I'm gonna ask us that we come back in one half an hour. We had a very, very busy day, folks. Does that work for everyone? We'll have a working... Eat and lunch quickly. So, we'll come back at, uh, 12:15? 12:16, I guess, give us a full half hour?
Thank you. I'd like to call Red Deer County Council back to order. The time is 12:15. The next item is item number 6.1 in our agenda. It's Red Deer Intermissible Development Plan to consider second and third readings. Just to double check, Ms. Rodwell, am I okay to chair this meeting? I wasn't at that hearing.
The MGA says that you must abstain from voting, but says nothing regarding your participation in the meeting.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Barrow, I'd like to read out the report.
Absolutely. So this is to consider granting second and third reading to bylaw number 1008/2025, bylaw that proposes to adopt the City of Red Deer and Red Deer County Intermissible Development Plan. First reading of the city and county's proposed bylaws were passed on May 13th and May 20th respectively. A joint council public meeting was subsequently held on June 16th here at Red Deer County Center. Four members of the public provided comments on the IDP at that hearing. Following the closure of the public hearing, both councils agreed that at their next regularly scheduled council meetings, each respective council will consider granting second and third readings to their respective bylaws with the following amendments: By deleting Schedule A, Section 13.10.2A, and replacing it with require at least a composition seven members consisting of, and amending Schedule A, Section 4.2 or 14.2 under Commemorations 79 by deleting the first organizations. Just before we get into this, just a brief update. City Council did consider second and third reading last night or yesterday, and they did approve both second and third. So dependent on the information that was received at the public hearing, and to allow time for council's consideration of that information received, provide direction to administration for receipt of clarification information relative to specific matters of concern, the following alternatives are provided: Can grant second, third readings to adopt bylaw 1008/2025, or refer decision on the application pending further information or denied application. Recommendation is to grant second and third readings to adopt bylaw number 1008/2025 for the proposed Red Deer Intermissible Development Plan as amended stated in Alternative 3.0A. Thanks.
Thank you for the report, Mr. Barrow.
Counsel, just for your reminder, the public hearing on this matter is closed, so you cannot receive any additional information regarding this item. So we would ask that you don't ask any questions unless they're process-related things.
Are there any process-related questions? Councilor Kenna.
Thank you. So with what was presented there, we have to make amendments first? Or is that part of second reading?
You can do second reading as amended with those amendments in it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Moore.
So I'm hoping this can be its process. So if this is passed, how can we revisit if it isn't working for certain people?
Mr. Barrow.
So through CAO to mayor and council. So through CAO to Mayor and Council, the IDP itself has a number of policies related to how you may be able to amend essentially or change the IDP itself. There is a process that's involved. It involves the RCC. If you have any particular amendments that you want to bring forward, it can go through that process and filter itself through the RCC and then from there, recommendations go back to council and onwards. So there is a process, just like with any plan, depending on who is applying for the application itself or the amendment. But it will involve both councils in terms of its approval.
Thank you for that, Mr. Bar. Would that, could they be identified today?
Mr. Bar.
I think for today, we're just trying to get the, through the, through the upgrades essentially. If there are amendments that you would like to see, for sure, I think the mechanism would be to present those or get those through RCC for them to have that discussion and for sure that can come back and it may result in a, in an IDP amendment in the future. Yeah, I'm not sure if you want to state them today or not, but I don't believe that is something that we're contemplating at this point.
Thank you for the clarity.
Any other procedural questions? If not, I'm looking for a motion for second reading. Counselor Holsman.
Yes, I would move that we grant second reading to adopt bylaw number 1008/2025 for the proposed Red Deer Intermunicipal Development Plan as amended and as stated in Alternative 3A.
Thank you. Any discussion on second reading? Counselor DePalm.
So I guess, you know, I do have an issue with the new IDP. The area around it, around the city of Red Deer. You know, concerns have been raised to me about how much farmland is within this growth area and if they really need it at this point in time. So yeah, I guess right now I don't really agree with the map as proposed. So I don't think I'll be supporting second reading.
Thank you. Any other comments? No, no, no. Okay, I'm just making sure I get everyone. Counsel Moore. Oh, there was somebody. Okay. Okay, you are. Okay, I was just, I didn't see no. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, my understanding the map is actually shrunk from previous IDPs. Is that correct? Thank you.
Counselor Ramsey.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I will certainly support second reading. You know, I think it's important we get this updated because it is improving on what was in place in the past. And you know, a lot of work has gone into this and getting it to this point. And I think, I think not passing it leaves us with the old policy, which leaves us with more area to be concerned about. And you know, I, I agree. I think through our conversations at GPC and stuff, there had been concern raised about future amalgamation, how all that was going to look. But you know, I, I think with our improved relationship in the RCC, I, I think we can handle those with better metrics and policy and hopefully, you know, a little bit more negotiation in future process and potentially even update that map. I agree, it is concerning to look at, at the amount of land in there and the impacts it could have on the future. But you know, this, this is a starting place that we can start to improve on as things progress. The one thing I kind of brought up at first reading was around the renewable energy projects and having, you know, potentially trying to exclude them like we do CFOs in the document. And I do think that's something that as the, the updates to the legislation and the AUC approvals change and hopefully they will respect our documents, I do think that is something that we should look at adding in the future. You know, certainly, it certainly benefits the, the city and their growth. But you know, if, if a large project came into the growth area, it could impact how they're going to grow and, and the areas that they might want to go into. So I, I think that is something to be concerned about as that legislation gets updated. But yeah, this, this has my full support and hopefully we can get it passed today.
Thank you. Counselor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. So I, I have the same concerns as Counselor DePalm because I've not only at the hearing, but I have had calls about what this does to our, especially our ag producers. And right now, I don't think they're being served by this document as they should be. And there could be negative impacts to their future expansion or potential subdivision. So yeah, right now, I, I won't be supporting second reading.
Thank you. Counselor Masser.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I guess maybe I had the pleasure of sitting on RCC. So getting a little more intimate with this IDP changes than the rest, and I apologize for not reporting back on really how wonderful the progress was to have two large municipalities administration get together and work so well together for the benefit of both. And that's why I'm going to fully support this. I, I hear the growth area is too big. Too big for what? Too big to protect agriculture? Really, what that area does is prevent speculators from leapfrogging development before the city's ready for it. And then, I guess, not making true value of agricultural land. Because as soon as you let speculators move too far from the city with these big promises that, boy, one day this will be the city, hurry up and sell it to me now and I'll get it developed and you'll win from that. That's not doing agriculture any favors. By having it in the growth area as ag land, you know that the future use of that's going to be ag land until the city can justify why they need it for area of development. So I truly think that this will stop leapfrogging and the potential of it. Administrations worked really well together, even to the point where they don't want to pick and choose where growth centers for both municipalities should be. Let's let the market dictate. And so we're really open to joint projects and not to stifle each other's individual growth. Fully supportive of second reading.
Okay, Counselor Holsman would like to close. Okay, I'm going to remain silent on this because I wasn't here for the hearing. Always in favor? All those opposed? Motion's been carried. Counselor DePalm and Counselor Moore opposed. Okay, I'm looking for third reading. Counselor Kenna.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'd move third reading at this time, as stated before.
This third reading would be sufficient because we've already had first reading on another date. This third reading is all correct? This third reading.
Yep, I'm moving third reading. And as stated before, this has been a long process through the RCC and other things. And this document may not be perfect, but it's, it's actually protecting farmland and stopping, as been stated before, the speculators that would jump in and try and do things that aren't good for farmland. Doesn't mean that there, this document may not change or it may change again the next time it comes through. That's, that's the great thing about this document. It isn't set in stone forever. It is, it is a living document that can be amended as the time requires. And that's why I think third reading is good to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Close in favor? Right hand vote. Opposed? Counselor Moore, Counselor DePalm? Same as before. Motion's been carried. All right, we're done that one. And now jumping back to item number, I think we all work on this one, Mr. Bar. We know, we know, and all the rest of staff and members of the, and members of the committee and members of council. This is, this was, this is a momentous day to actually work together, you know, with, with the, with the city of Red Deer and, and to now see this is passed. So I can speak now because that's after the vote, so. All right, going back now to item number 5.5 because it's related. Correct?
Good afternoon, counsel. Congratulations on passing the IDP. So following that, we're requesting today second and third reading for the Intermunicipal Subdivision Development Appeal Board bylaw. First reading was granted in May and the proposed bylaw has been drafted to reflect those principles that were set out in the IDP. And it maintains most of the key elements of the existing ISDAB bylaw. Just to quickly remind you of the proposed changes. So the length of term for the chair will be set by council resolution at the time of the appointment. That's different than your prior bylaw. The number of board members we're proposing to increase from three plus an alternative five from each municipality. That's not to say that the board will sit in panels of 10. It just makes it easier for administration in that any of their SDAB members could sit on an ISDAB hearing. It removes the quorum provision and adds the ability of the board to meet in panels of two, three, four, or five for merit appeals. A one-member panel may convene a hearing for the sole purpose of addressing preliminary matters such as scheduling. That comes up frequently when SDAB is involved. There's a 30-day time limit to hear appeals. There's a provision for each municipality to ensure their appointed members receive and hold training. That is just stemming out of the last number of years dealing with the old bylaw and in conjunction with the new training that's required. The board may meet as a committee to address administrative matters and hearings can be held in person via teleconference or video conference. And the recommendation today is that council give second and third readings to bylaw 1006/2025. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe this is the same date that I went at the other one, correct, Ms. Rodwell?
Uh, no, not correct. This one actually had first reading the same day. So that was back in May and it didn't require a public hearing. So no public hearings been, been held. So this, this item is completely different and no abstentions are required.
Oh, good. It's always like, it's always nice to be able to vote. Good. All right. So questions? Counselor Masser.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Council resolution to set the length of term for chair. I'm just scared future councils are going to say a big number. So is there not a maximum, like up to five years or up to 25 years or for the rest of their life? Future councils, I don't know, I don't trust them.
Well.
Through the CAO to council, you are welcome to set a term on that. But administration historically has had difficulty filling that position. And so sometimes when we get a good applicant in, it serves us well to keep them longer than the typical three-year term that your appointed committee members are for. So it's completely up to you. But I would recommend allowing the council of the day to determine that number.
Hopefully admin can get rid of the bad ones too. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Moore.
So on that, what is the risk to just keeping that person because it's hard to find another one? A good applicant. I, I recognize the difficulty and the challenge, but is that in the best interest?
As council, pardon me, through the CAO to council, council always has the power to remove appointments as well. So if there were difficulties, of course, we would work with administration on the city side and see if we can come up with a joint recommendation to both councils.
And my, my final question, the one-person committee, it's just administration, basically administrative duties, no decision-making involved.
Correct.
Counselor Ramsey? Counselor Kenna? Counselor DePalm? Counselor Holsman?
Thank you for the report. I would move, I would move that we grant second reading to bylaw number 1006/2025 as presented.
Discussion on second reading.
Through the mayor, we're just going to ask Counselor Holsman if we can just make a small amendment in the bylaw to correct the dates that the IDP were approved because they were just approved today. So of course, we didn't pre-populate those dates for you, but we'd like to populate the dates correctly.
Thank you.
Discussion? I say no hands. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Looking for third reading. Counselor Ramsey was faster.
Sure, Mayor Wood, I'll, I'll move third reading with, with the amendments. Yeah, I still didn't really like the, the one-person committee. I think that's a loophole to delay hearings. But I already kind of lost that decision and we kind of need to, to get this updated to match the, the IDP. So I'll move third reading.
Third reading has been moved. Any discussion? Seeing no one wants, no discussion, all those in favor? It's carried unanimously.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Appreciate your work. Continuing on now, next item on our agenda is item number 6.2. We're down to subdivision applications and reports. The SEF, Southeast of 537, 27, 4, redesignation. Ms. McLaughlin, how are you today?
I'm good. How are you?
Good.
Good. Good afternoon, counsel. This bylaw before you is for bylaw number 1002/2025G and it's a redesignation from the agricultural district to the C3 district. So it's to consider granting first reading to redesignate 2.78 hectares from ag to highway commercial on part of the southeast 537, 27, west of the fourth and set a public hearing date for August the 26th. So this application we have received is to redesignate the, the lands in Junction 42 to create two lots for commercial and/or industrial uses. So the parcel is accessed from Long Hall Way, which is a paved internal subdivision road. And the surrounding lands are a mix of agricultural, business service, medium industrial, and highway commercial. The intent of the future subdivision is to create a 1, 2.26 hectare parcel for future truck parking and 1.517 hectare parcel which would be put for sale. Currently, both of the parcels are bare. The parcel is located within the Junction 42 local area structure plan and is designated as commercial or commercial light industrial. And it is located within the Red Deer County and Town of Penhold Intermunicipal Development Plan and is part of the county growth area. The proposal does comply with all of the statutory plans. As part of the application, it will be referred to internal and external agencies and adjacent landowners for comments or concerns. And the proposed amendments will be provided in the county news and online and posted on the website prior to the public hearing. So we are recommending that council grant first reading to bylaw number 1002/2025G and set a public hearing for August 26th as per 4A. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions of administration on this matter? I'm looking for first reading. Counselor DePalm.
So I would move first reading to bylaw number 1002/2025G and set the public hearing date for August 26th, 2025 as per 4 dash, or point 0A.
Thank you. Counselor Masser.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it's a question. And I'm going to support first reading, but.
Just remember, we got a hearing coming.
Yeah. My, my question is why isn't it a larger piece of land? Like, I, I didn't realize that every time we potentially sell a piece of land in Junction, it's got to come back for redesignation. I thought we already had an IDP or whatever you want to call it. Sorry, I don't. An area structure plan for that area that sort of outlines what type of usages is going into Junction 42. But did you get a question in that or do I have to keep trying to explain my question?
I think Mr. Hurstbrook's figured it out.
I think I like him. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Post-lunch answer. In a perfect world, you know exactly what size every.
In a perfect world, you know exactly what size every potential developer may require, and you'd have it ahead of time. But also, if you have the time and it's not creating too much difficulties, being able to customize that a little bit, still underneath the guise of the entire plan, but knowing that's a growth area, knowing we're expanding the truck stop and the parking and all the rest of it, that if you can put up with it and manage it this way, you can be a little more customer-friendly to the people who are going in there in terms of their needs. You know, you put a a row of of, and I was gonna say more theoretically than this public hearing, but you put a row of lots out there, it's not quite like a housing, right, where every lot's maybe fifty feet across, right? Different uses have different needs, so this this allows you to be a little bit more custom in that regard, still recognizing and respecting it's our growth area, it fits our plans, it fits the overall outline plan as well. So, there's a academic, more than a specific response.
Can I rephrase a question?
Of course you can.
Okay. I really liked that answer because it it helps our potential businesses out there. Is there any barriers to doing it this way? Are are speculators leery of coming in because they don't know if they'll get zoning? So, you said it was beneficial doing it this way. Do you see barriers doing it this way? And it's probably not the time, it's probably a GPC-type question, so just say so of so.
Mr. Hurstburg?
No, I go a little bit into that in terms of it's 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 always a risk if you have too much time between when a person is interested. You know, it depends how how far out. Generally speaking, the average developer who has the capacity and the capability of of taking on things like like that type of development recognizes the period of time they have. Redyer County has been pretty good as a business partner and and staying fairly efficient in our timeline, so we start to extend that, we start to have difficulties proceeding that way. That might, my 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 thoughts on that might change, but I think if it can fit within there, it still allows you that maximum variability and flexibility. Again, based on that overarching plan still being in place that does guide folks.
Absolutely, thank you. Council DePomme has moved first reading. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor first reading? Carried unanimously. Continuing on. To item number six point three, a revision bylaw.
That's me as well.
Good to see you.
Thank you. There's no presentation for this one because I thought it was pretty straightforward in what we're asking, so if we need the report brought up, we can certainly do that. But the purpose of this request is to consider a revision bylaw to correct an error in bylaw number 1002/2025B, which was a bylaw to amend the land use by on the gravel extraction overlay district. So, we just did this at the last council meeting on June twenty-seventeenth, I believe. So, what had happened is when we went to implement the bylaw and make the changes in the actual bylaw document, we noticed that there was an error where the bylaw amendments referenced part twenty-six and not part thirty-six. So, under the Municipal Government Act, section sixty-three-one, there is a provision for revising bylaws that a council of a municipality may by bylaw revise the bylaws in accordance with the section, and so in this section, it does allow to make changes without materially affecting the bylaw in principle or substance to correct clerical, technical, grammatical, or typographical errors in the bylaw. And so, we do feel that we can implement section sixty-three-one by correcting the number twenty-six to the number thirty-six because it is clerical and would not materially affect the bylaw in principle or substance because the remainder of the title of the bylaw did indicate that it was clear it was to be located within the gravel extraction overlay district. Under this bylaw, it does include the title revised bylaw as required. There's also a requirement under the Municipal Government Act that the CAO needed to certify that the revised revisions were prepared in accordance with the MGA, and that has been certified. So, we are requesting that council grant all three readings to revise the bylaw 1002025-BR to revise bylaw number 1002/2025-B. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Are there any questions? Council Moore?
So, thank you for the report. So, are we voting on a clerical error? I just, I just want to be clear because I did vote differently, so I just want that reassurance.
Through the CAO to members of council, yes, you're voting on a revised bylaw to correct part twenty, where it said part twenty-six in the bylaw, to correct it to say part thirty-six instead.
Thank you.
Other questions going this way? Anyone? Okay. I need a motion for first reading. Council DePomme?
I would grant first reading to the revision bylaw.
Discussion at first reading? Any? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried unanimously, looking for second reading. Council Massier?
Yeah, move second reading for the revision bylaw.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried unanimously. I need one for third reading at this time. If we're gonna continue, Council Kenneth?
Yeah, I'd move for third reading at this time.
All those in favor? Unanimous, so we can now continue to third reading if someone wishes to make that motion. Council Ramsey?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. I would move third reading of the revision bylaw.
Council Massier?
In the, in the report, there's the two... One's the revised bylaw, looking for first, second, and third reading, and then are we gonna just repeat this for schedule one, which also requires first, second, and third reading, or is this all getting done at the same time?
Ms. Rodwell?
Schedule one is essentially showing you the corrections live in the bylaw, so should your revision bylaw pass, that's what your actual bylaw would then look like, correct, Ms. McLaughlin?
So, we're not gonna redo this all, okay, thank you.
No, that's, that's correct. As soon as you pass the revision bylaw, we'll amend, we'll correct the amending bylaw, then we'll put that in the land use bylaw, so we've got two sets of double amendments to do as we work our way through that one administratively.
Okay, you're done? Any other comments? If not, all those in favor? Motion's been carried unanimously. Continuing on, I'm gonna hold, oh, we're holding that one. Liberty, if we go six-four? Nope, hold it, says holding it.
Yeah, I believe the only item that you can proceed with at this time is your notice of motion.
Okay, fair enough. Notice of motion, item number eight point one, introductory notice of motion from Councilor Moore. I believe that we need a motion to go into camera for that. Go ahead.
I would move that we go into closed session, access to information act, and disclosure harmful to personal privacy is listed in the agenda at twelve forty-seven.
Twelve forty-seven, we have a motion to go into camera. Discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? You have Councilor Moore and Councilor Massier opposed. The motion has been carried. Just gonna make a note of that. Okay, and...
Okay, so we have GPC. Um, we got a few minutes for it. Um, I ' d like to do we have an up? We don ' t happen to have an agenda for our GPC.
Okay, so we have GPC, um, we got a few minutes for it. Um, I'd like to, do we have an, we don't happen to have an agenda for our GPC. Okay, so we have GPC, um, we got a few minutes for it. Um, I'd like to, do we have an, we don't happen to have an agenda for our GPC. Okay, so we have GPC, um, we got a few minutes for it. Um, I'd like to, do we have an, we don't happen to have an agenda for our GPC. I'd like to call Reddy County Council to order, the time is one thirty, this is the time for our public hearing. If you are in the audience or online, council wishes to hear your views on the matter. How this will work is administration will read out the item. And following that, I will ask for folks to either addresses online or in person. The idea is it's not a forum for debate, but it's a forum for information to council. You know, five minutes to make your, to make your case to us and, um, today council may or may not make a determination on this matter depending on the complexity of the information that we receive today. So the, looks like we only have one item today and that's going to be by law number, oh boy, my eyes. By law number one zero zero two slash two zero two five dash D. Good afternoon again, Mr. Barr, how are you today? Would you, can we hear our report, please?
Very good, thank you. So this is to hold a public hearing for bylaw number one zero zero two two zero two five dash D. This is a bylaw to amend the land use bylaw, uh, by amending a portion about point nine four hectares of Liberty Landing Direct Control District DCD nine A. Uh, the map from Liberty Landing Medium Density Residential Duplex to Liberty Landing Single Family Dwelling Small Lot Zero Lot Line as indicated in the attached Schedule B. And to consider second and third readings to propose bylaw. On May thirteenth, council granted first reading to propose bylaw. The intent of the application is to redesignate the subject area from Medium Density Duplex Single Detached Dwelling to Zero Lot Line. A single detached, I should say, uh, dwellings or lot line. The applicant has indicated that they're applying for the amendment in response to current real estate market conditions and market demand. Land is located within the southwest twenty-nine thirty-seven twenty-seven west of the fourth. Other Liberty Landing Residential Development area within the hamlet of Gasoline Alley. The subject land is within the Liberty Landing Outline Plan. It's also within the county's growth area in the city of, uh, Sinian County IDP. Uh, and within the Gasoline Alley West Major Area Structure Plan which indicates the area's future residential development. It's located approximately nine hundred meters, um, nine hundred meters from Highway two, I'm assuming, and adjacent south of Waskegee Avenue. The surrounding lands are within the DCD nine A Liberty Landing, uh, area which includes a mix of low to high density residential development. Other lands outside this district are a mix of commercial and country residential development. Uh, please note the proposed land use bylaw amendment is being conducted also in conjunction with a, another application amending the outline plan which we'll be hearing after the public hearing. Uh, reflecting the same change, just for consistency. The public hearing notice was referred to internal and external agencies and to adjacent landowners for comments and concerns. Public notice was advertised in the county news and posted on the county's website. No comments had been received or have been received at this time of this report, uh, as presented today. Depending on council's decision relative to the information received during the public hearing. Process either you can grant second and third readings to the bylaw as presented. Uh, or for decision on the second reading to the bylaw pending receipt of further information as requested by council. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Is there anyone in the audience or online that wishes to address council on this matter? Please come forward. I would, I would ask that you would state your name and usually we ask where you're from, but you may be, whatever. So you, you let us, you let us know this, so. I need to make sure that this goes green so I can hear you. Thank you.
Your honor, members of council, um, my name is Shane Stafford from Stentec Consulting, uh, working on behalf of the developer, LaMonte Land. I guess this is, this is not much, uh, there's not much amendment here, but, uh, amendments are sometimes a hassle and take up some time, but this one's fairly simple. Um, it means that development is progressing. It means that there's a need for this type of housing. They've found a product that is, uh, the zero lot line product that is very popular in this area. And so they're going to continue with it. Um, the duplexes that were assigned there previously, um, are no longer going to be there, so changing it to a, a zero lot line is more or less the same product, just split apart so that, uh, you know, they're a, a single family instead of a, um, semi-detached, uh, same, you know, same, uh, unit count and, and same type of floor plans and that type of stuff. So no increased density or problems like that. Um, it'll be just a straightforward switch. And, uh, it means that, yeah, the developer's ready to go ahead this year with some more lots, so that should be good for the county. So we look forward to your, uh, decision in these matters.
Thank you. Are there any questions of, of, of the speaker? Well, thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else's that wishes to address council on this matter? Um, online, do we see anyone? For a second time, is there anyone that wishes to address council on this matter? For a third and final time, uh, seeing, seeing no one wishes to, um, I just have a question before we close the hearing. Are there any questions of administration on this matter, Councilor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Uh, I know this situation is not really going to change, uh, as the presenter, um, said regarding duplexes to, uh, single family zero lot line. But at what point would we look, um, at this differently, you know, really changing the, the nature of the neighborhood? Like, this one isn't an example of that. It's just people purchase a home thinking they know what's going to be around them. So what would be our, I'm just curious, what would be our process?
Ms. Miller?
So through the CAO to mayor and council, with respect to this, they're, they're really getting out ahead of it. So this is the first process to take a look at just changing the nature of what can go in there. And then they would look at doing the next phase of that development. So anyone purchasing a lot, we're still down the road from doing that. So this isn't a situation where there's already a bunch of properties in and around them and then we're changing it. So, um, this product has been trialed in the area. There's lots of it. It seems to be working well. And with respect to safety codes, that's, that's our primary and they have to adhere to that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Councilor Master?
Yeah, I'll try my best to be careful making a question till you get a motion on the table, but I'll, I'll do my best. When we set up this whole area, we want to looking for diversity in housing types. Uh, single family dwellings, multi-family dwellings, maybe even some apartments and newer, modern, zero lot line type homes. But a, a, a variety of housing in the hopes that we could provide for a variety of family incomes even. I'm hearing today that we're losing some duplexes in favor of single family dwellings. My question is, is there still duplexes in this area so we don't lose our vision of having a diversity of homes in this area?
Ms. Miller?
So with respect to that, there is a lot of housing diversity in this area. There's ten unit homes, there's lots of four unit homes, uh, single family dwellings, the zero lot lines, duplexes. It is, it does have a very big range. Um, there is the ability to put in apartments on some of the higher, um, zones, but yeah, the diversity is still there.
Thank you very much.
Any questions, Councilor Holsman? I'm going to skip over you. Oh, it's your area. Councilor DePalm, Councilor Ramsey, Councilor Kennett, it's your area. Questions or make a motion?
Is the hearing closed?
It has not been officially stated yet, but it-
Oh, I haven't actually disclosed it, have I? All right, I'll, I'm going to declare it, sorry about that. I've got ahead of myself.
The subject land is within Liberty Landing Outline Plan. It's also within the county's growth area in the city of. Sinian County I D P and within the Gasoline Alley. West Major Area Structure Plan, which indicates the area's future residential development. It's located approximately nine hundred meters. Nine hundred meters from Highway two, I'm assuming, and adjacent south of Wascasouche Avenue. The surrounding lands are within the D C D nine A Liberty Landing area, which includes a mix of low. To high density residential development. Other lands outside this district are a mix of commercial and country residential development. Please note the proposed land use by law amendment is being conducted also in conjunction with a. Another application amending the outline plan, which we'll be hearing after the public hearing. Reflecting the same change, just for consistency. The public hearing notice was referred to internal and external agencies and to adjacent landowners for comments and concerns. Public notice was advertised in the county news and posted on the county's website. No comments had been received or have been received at this time of this report as presented today. Depending on council's decision relative to the information received during the public hearing. Process either you can grant second and third readings to the by law as presented. Or for decision on the second reading to the by law pending receipt of further information as requested by council. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Is there anyone in the audience or online that wishes to address council on this matter? Please come forward. I would, I would ask that you would state your name and. Usually we ask where you're from, but you may be whatever. So you, you let us, you let us know this. I need to make sure that this goes green so I can hear you. Thank you.
Your honor, members of council, my name is Shane Stafford from Stentec Consulting. Working on behalf of the developer, LaMonte Land. I guess this is, this is not much, there's not much amendment here, but amendments are sometimes a hassle and take up some time, but. This one's fairly simple. It means that development is progressing. It means that there's a need for this type of housing. They found a product that is. The zero lot line product that is very popular in this area and so they're going to continue with it. The duplexes that were assigned there previously. Are no longer going to be there, so changing it to a zero lot line. Is more or less the same product, just split apart so that, you know, they're a, a single family instead of a. Semi-detached, same, you know, same unit count and, and same type of floor plans and that type of stuff, so. No increased density or problems like that. It'll be just a straightforward switch. And it means that, yeah, the developer's ready to go ahead this year with some more lots. That should be good for the county. So we look forward to your decision in these matters.
Thank you. Are there any questions of, of, of the speaker? Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else that wishes to address council on this matter? Online, do we see anyone for a second time? Is there anyone that wishes to address council on this matter? For a third and final time. Seeing, seeing no one wishes to. I just have a question before we close the hearing. Are there any questions of administration on this matter, Councilor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. I, I know this situation is not really going to change, as the presenter said. Regarding duplexes to a single family zero lot line, but at what point would we look? At this differently, you know, really changing the, the nature of the neighborhood, like. This one isn't an example of that. It's just people purchase a home. Thinking they know what's going to be around them. So what would be our, I'm just curious, what would be our process?
Ms. Miller?
So through the C A O to mayor and council, with respect to this, they're, they're really getting out ahead of it. So this is the first process to take a look at just changing the nature of what can go in there. And then they would look at doing the next phase of that development. So anyone purchasing a lot. We're still down the road from doing that. So this isn't a situation where there's already a bunch of properties in and around them. And then we're changing it. So this product has been trialed in the area. There's lots of it. It seems to be working well and with respect to safety codes, that's, that's our primary and they have to adhere to that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Councilor Master?
Yeah, I'll try my best to be careful making another question till you get a motion on the table, but I'll, I'll do my best. When we set up this whole area, we were looking for diversity in housing types. Single family dwellings. Multi-family dwellings, maybe even some apartments and newer, modern, zero lot line type homes. But a, a, a variety of housing in the hopes that we could provide for a variety of family incomes even. I'm hearing today that we're losing some duplexes in favor of single family dwellings. My question is. Is there still duplexes in this area? So we don't lose our vision of having a diversity of homes in this area.
Ms. Miller?
So with respect to that, there is a lot of housing diversity in this area. There's ten unit homes. There's lots of four unit homes, single family dwellings, the zero lot lines, duplexes. It is, it does have a very big range. There is the ability to put in apartments on some of the higher. Zones, but yeah, the diversity is still there.
Thank you very much.
Any questions, Councilor Holsman? I'm going to skip over you. Oh, it's your area. Councilor DePalm. Councilor Ramsey, Councilor Kennett, it's your area. Questions or make a motion?
Is the hearing closed?
It has not been officially stated yet, but.
Oh, I haven't actually disclosed it, have I? All right. I'll, I'm going to declare it. Sorry about that. I've got ahead of myself. Good thing that, that, because you're, you're sharp today. As usual, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. Now we'll take, now we'll take the, the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wasn't sure myself, so. I would move a second reading to by law number one zero zero two slash twenty twenty five dash D. As presented in the attached by law. Thank you.
Now's a good time for discussion. Any discussion? Councilor Ramsey?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Wood. I, I will support the, the motion for second reading. You know, I, I kind of agree. We've seen a bunch of these little changes as, as the area has progressed and, you know, how much is too much before you've. You've really changed what, what the plan was kind of intended as. I, I do agree this is, is a minor change and I know in the past. When there's been a little bit more contention, we've, we've heard from some of the public in the area, so. You know, not, not hearing from them tells me that they're okay with what's being proposed and, and yeah, I, I hope that. As, as it grows and develops out, we can still kind of look at it hol- holistically and kind of maintain the general intended plan.
Councilor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. I would support a second reading. I, I, I. I realize that the builders have to respond to what, to what people want to buy. And I'm assured that there is still some diversity of housing in this area. And we got to set up a win-win here for both developers and for. The people who want to choose Liberty Landing and Red Deer County as their, as their home. So I am happy to see it's flourishing. I still can't believe the growth there and very, very happy to see it. Thanks.
Counselor, uh, has here, no, Councilor Holsman? Councilor DePalm? No, I, I just want to, I want to say, you know what? Red Deer County's been very responsive over time to. Try to ensure that we see development happen in an orderly fashion that actually makes sense. Makes sense to, to the people that want to live in our community and try to provide the types of housing that, that they're looking for. You know, we've been, zero outline was, was a new thing a while back and, you know, it's, it's, it's for us and, you know, it. It's really caught on and, you know what? I, I think this is a great alternative to, to, to duplex style housing if, if it works with zero lot lines. And everyone has, owns their own home completely and doesn't have to listen to the neighbor banging on the door if that's what they're, if that's what they're wanting. Not like there's still some duplexes in this, in, in, in Liberty Landing somewhere, so. Very, very, very supportive of it. Counts, and I want to thank administration and everyone else for, for working with our developers on these because we know this doesn't happen overnight. You know, there had to be probably a whole lot happened before you got here today. Councilor Kennett, close.
Yeah, I think it's pretty evident. It's quite a diverse place, anybody that's driven through there, so, you know, this, this change. This is market driven. This is what the market's wanting. And, you know, in a year or two years, some of the other parts might have a different look, so I think this is a great. This is the developer responding to what the market wants and what the people want and it's great to see the growth that's going on there. Thank you.
Okay, so a motion on the floor for second reading. All those in favor? And that's everyone carried unanimously. Okay, let's go and looking for a third reading, if possible.
I'll move third reading.
Discussion of third reading. Almost in favor of third reading. Third reading's been carried unanimously. We know, it looks like so that's done. Now we look like we can make an amendment to this. To this area's outline plan. So we're going to go back now so we can make all this happen because it's all got to jive, we're done. Item number six point four, amendment to the Liberty Landing Outline Plan, Mr. Barr.
Thank you. Is it there? Do I have it open? I'm sorry. Okay. Hopefully I kept all my changes. So this is to consider adopting by way of resolution. The following amendments to Liberty Landing Outline Plan. Uh, amend, we're looking to amend figure six concept plan by replacing a portion, like I said, about point nine four hectares. Of medium density duplex area to a single family dwelling zero lot line as indicated. Uh, amending all figures and tables within the outline plan that'll be affected by the proposed amendment to the concept plan. So Liberty Landing Outline Plan is located, as stated before, within the county growth area and the city and county I D P. It's also within our Gasoline Alley West Major Area Structure Plan. And it's located approximately nine hundred meters west of Q E two and adjacent to. Township Road three seventy four, also known as McKenzie Road. Other land uses.
All right. Like to call us back to order. The time is one fifty four. Most of we got all our, all our power functioning again, so. Mr. Barr, I think you were in the middle of the process, but I don't even remember where the heck you were.
Oh, it's okay. I don't remember either, but we'll, this is pretty close. It's okay, we're good. You've heard all the stuff before, right, with the, the land use by law amendment, so I'm not going to go that again, bore you to death. Terms of some new stuff, though, just in terms, like the effect of the proposed amendment. Kind of is displayed here in this figure. Summarized in this table, I should say, kind of our housing mix. So. Potentially you could see an increase in the number of dwelling units because you're going duplex to. Single family, zero lot line and within the D C D district, it does allow as a permitted. Secondary suites. So this is an estimate of potential number of dwelling units because obviously not every. Lot is going to want to have a single, um, uh, secondary suite, so. This gives you a bit of an idea of where we could potentially max out at, nine hundred and two dwelling units. Fun fact, just in terms of population for Liberty Landing, if you were to develop out to nine hundred and two units. You're probably getting pretty close to twenty four hundred population, somewhere in that range. So fair number of people within that particular area, as Trina said as well. Diversity of housing is, is fairly major in this particular area, which is great. So yeah, I don't want to dwell on this too, too much. I think we could probably move on to the next. I just wanted to point out that we could potentially. See some increase density just because of that potential for secondary suites. Uh, the proposed amendment will have no net, uh, number or no, no net effect on the number of dwelling units. So you're taking away some from medium density, you're adding some to single family. It works out to about thirty four units total. And within that subject area, or within the entire area, it's two hundred and forty four units. It just sort of shuffles things around a little bit, but the density is actually exactly the same in terms of number of dwelling units. Specifically for those particular types of developments excluding secondary suites. The amendment will affect the concept plan and the associated maps and tables in the outline plan. I won't list them all off, but we will go through it and update all of them. We'll probably have to update some of those areas as well. I noticed that when you're attached Schedule B, uh, some of the areas. Uh, for single family dwelling as well as medium needs to be tweaked as well because there will be a change in, in the area. Uh, the proposed amendment was referred to internal and external agencies and landowners adjacent to the subject area, very similar to. The land use by law, the development or document was available for review at the county center and on the county's website. Uh, we did receive one comment from Alberta Health Services. We generally always do. In the next slide, I'll get into the details on it. So I think when they read it originally, they're a little worried about the parking area and. Making sure that we had sufficient parking. Without actually reading the outline plan itself and the outline plan itself addresses that, so they're good to. They're happy to see that. Their comment in general just reads, recommends consideration for a sufficient parking, parking will be ensured as there is heavy reliance on vehicle. Transportation and community and the proposed changes will further limit parking options, no longer offer driveways or attached graces as parking options. Especially where secondary suites are further developed. Uh, but they do, um, in subsequent comments state that it was addressed in the outline plan itself. So they're just reiterating their concern for parking and what that would look like. So at this point, council or administration is, is recommending approval by way of council resolution. The proposed amendments to Liberty Landing Outline Plan by amending figure six concept plan by replacing a portion. Uh, as illustrated previously, a portion of the medium density duplex area to single family dwelling zero lot line. Um, as indicated in your package and amend all figures and tables within the outline plan. Uh, that'll be affected by the amendment to that, uh, figure, figure number six. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions? Councilor Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Barr, for the presentation. Just following up on the, the concerns regarding the parking, et cetera. Would we limit secondary suites? Like, is there a cap? Or is it a free for all?
That is a very, very good question. I'll just state, just based off the D C D itself, is that right now secondary suites are considered. A permitted use. That said. There'll be some working back and forth with a developer to determine what areas potentially could have a secondary suite and which ones could not. So we do have that, correct me if I'm wrong, sort of that dialogue to figure out and we do identify them in the outline plan as well. Try to, to limit.
Ms. Miller?
And just to add to that, this developer does have architectural controls, so part of the original review, the, the developer does review. The proposed development. Once it's stamped, then we proceed with our portion of the review. Uh, the developer has identified the lots that are eligible for suites. Now, if later down the road, um, we wanted to change it to all suites. It is identified in the outline plan, but it's not statutory. So there's nothing that would prevent them, but there is some, some mechanisms in place that encourage them in a certain location.
So, so further to that, would there be benefit in letting people, because some people. Build a house for the second income downstairs. Would it be very? Would it be better to warn them, like that it is allowed or it's not allowed, just to, you know, to. Prevent any misunderstandings?
So through the C A O to mayor and council, that is communicated with them when they do purchase the lot, so that information's provided. It is difficult to retrofit something after the fact to make it a secondary suite. It can be done, but it is more costly to do so.
Thank you.
Councilor Master?
Parking was my concern. An interesting Alberta Health brought it up. But you said it was covered in the outline plan, which satisfied them, so. A little more, if you could open that one up a bit more. could open that one up a bit more for clarity for me, and I guess secondary to that, this neighborhood's been around now for a little while, and you've got a few streets that are fully developed with some of these single homes, zero-lot lines, and some multi-lot. So secondary question to the first one would be, are we getting complaints about parking? Or, I don't know, Protective Services can answer that one, but I'm just, so the first question, I guess, with regards to parking, the health services said that they're okay with it based on something in an outline plan, and now I'm hearing maybe that's not statutory, I, I just-
So through the CAO to mayor and council, I'll let Ron speak to the outline plan section specifically, but with respect to the development itself, it does have to adhere to the land use bylaw, and the land use bylaw requires two parking stalls per residential dwelling, and then an additional offsite, and these are offsites, so driveways, garages, whatnot. And if you were to do another suite, so a secondary suite, you would have to provide an additional parking stall, so you have to provide three. So oftentimes, the parking itself would be preventative, depending on how it was set up in the first place. With respect to complaints, I know that it does get tricky when you have lots of fourplexes or, or four-unit structures, where each one has the one driveway. They do have to adhere to parking too, but sometimes that gets quite congested, but with the zero-lot lines, I'm not aware of any parking complaints to date.
Okay, and I appreciate the bylaws already in place to, to, to address that. Thank you. I, I might not need an answer now from your outline plan. I, I really liked what I heard through our bylaw and the requirements already, so I'm satisfied with that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any, I was going this way, Counselor Holsman, Counselor DePalm, Counselor Kennett made the motion, couns- what's up? You haven't made no motion yet. Alright, you want to make the motion?
Sure, just a question. Do we need two separate ones, or just one covering both the amendments?
What do you need, Ms. Rodwell? One motion?
One works. Okay, I'd move we approve the proposed amendments to Liberty Landing outline plan by way of council resolution as presented in the attached Schedule B. Thank you. This area is one of our big growth areas, really, and it's nice to see that the developer is working with what the market wants as well. This is good to see. Yeah, it's quite dynamic. You go in there, and if you don't go for a couple of months, come back, and there's a lot of changes in there, so, great to see, and I'm glad to see that people are excited to move into the county. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any comments? I just, I just, this is exciting. You know what, it, it's actually exciting to be able to see, because I've been here a long time, but it's, it's actually to start to see this all building out, and, and, and the nice part of it is, is that we're, we're creating a place that people actually want to be. And, and when I was at the, the home builder show, it was actually mentioned, I actually heard it, that how, how it was, I heard the comments of these zero-lot lines, and, and the good things that Red Deer County is doing, so, you know what, it's nice to work with their, with their developers and what the people want to buy, so. Do you want to, do you want to go ahead and close it? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Good luck. All right, what else? We have nothing else left on this agenda. Counselor DePalm?
I would adjourn our council meeting at 2:06.
All those in favor, let's carry it unanimously.